Ready? Good evening. Melinda Lautner, Commissioner Lautner was the first one here tonight, so she's going to lead us in the fledge.
Join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer.
Present.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Alguier.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
Thank you. Well, we have a number of agenda adjustments, and the clerk is going to keep us organized here. Michelle, would you?
We want to do approval of board minutes first, I believe.
Yeah, we probably should. We have a bunch of them. Thank you. We have seven sections, or seven sets of minutes. Any motions there? Commissioner Lautner.
Yes, I would move to approve minutes of regular session Tuesday, December 12, 2023. Committee of the whole Wednesday, January 3, 2024. Special session Wednesday, January 31, 2024. Special session Thursday, February 8, 2024. Committee of the whole Thursday, February 8, 2024. Close session Thursday, February 8, 2024. And the executive session of Tuesday, February 13, 2024.
Support. All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Seven sets of minutes have been approved. Okay, now the agenda. And would the clerk walk through the changes for us, please?
Yes. Can you hear me through my microphone?
A little louder. Not great. Louder.
Louder?
Just a little bit, yeah. Where's my sign? Non-voice.
Okay, non-voice. The first item on the, if you look at these green sheets here that you have, the first one, if you would like, would be to add to the agenda. The BIS digital for this room. The demo equipment that you requested to do is not available. So what you see there, if you wish to add it, to discuss it, or act on it, is the motion that was made prior to the withdrawal, when you asked to move forward with potential testing of the equipment. If you wish to add that, that would go on as action item number eight. The next item on there is information technology. And if you write on these green sheets, it will maybe be easier for you to follow later on. Information technology, safety net, that is listed as consent item number two. But that does need to be moved forward to action because it was just a move forward to tonight's meeting. And I have listed a suggested motion based on your discussion and everything at last Tuesday's meeting. That would be action item number nine. If you turn to the next page, action item, or it was consent item number three, needs to be moved to action item. And that's the Parks and Rec sole source contract request, as that was just to move it forward to tonight. That would be action item number 10. The next two items would be to take consent item C and make an add acceptance of awards, which would make the Grand Travers ban 2% grant allocation awards 5C, and then move the original consent 6C to action item 5D, which would then be the grant allocation agreements. You need to accept the awards before you enter into agreements.
And with those changes, we'll take other late additions or deletions?
So, um, we really don't have an action six or seven then?
Oh, it's on the backside of your agenda of this one, the short one. Action item number six is the MLI Administrator Search. And seven is a late addition for the South Bar Lake Drain 3.
Yep, two-sided agenda, all right. Yes, I see that now.
Do we have approval of the agenda then? Motion?
As amended.
As amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approved, 7-0. And if the clerk would help us keep on that, with those changes. Thank you. Thank you. At this point, we have administrator update, communications, proclamations, and presentations.
All right, so I have three items, just to kind of update you on. But I also do want to mention, I apologize, BIS was taken off because they can't accommodate us. So I took that off the agenda. So it's just a formality. We put it back on, a discussion. But just so that you know, that was a decision to move that forward. I've been asked to share with you, and I'll be sending an email in regards to the last Maple City dedication for Emma and Jacob, who are the family that has received one of the Habitat for Humanity homes. And that dedication is going to be on Wednesday, March 6. So if you can please mark your calendars for Wednesday, March 6, at 5 o'clock. That's at 8518 South Maple Street, Maple City, so the Maple City crossings. And the other date that I wanted to remind you of, I mentioned this last Tuesday, but in regards to the airport authority and the new mapping for zoning, that meeting and a joined meeting with Grand Travers County and the airport is March 13 at 3:00 p.m. And I'll send out information on the location of that. It'll be at one of the hangars at the airport. So more information on that. And want to mention just briefly that the preliminary injunction for Beta was addressed today. We had our special counsel. I participated in that. The motion was denied. So more information to come on what that will mean and what Beta's next steps will be. So just to let you know that you also have an email in your inbox from our legal counsel addressing that issue as well, and prepping for any next steps that there may be. So I think those were the three primary items that I just wanted to share with you this evening.
Any questions for the administrator? Okay. At this time, we do have a three-minute public comment opportunity for anybody in the audience that would like to speak to us. Public comment could be on a topic of your choice. Please address your comments to the board, and not to the audience, and not to individual board members, but the entire board. Anybody like to speak tonight? Yes, sir. Yes.
I'm Harris Evans, a precinct delegate, Cleveland Township. A couple of years ago, I came in here and I asked you guys if you would be wise. And I came in here, and I even read a prayer at one point in time. And let me just tell you, what my point of view is, in the Bible, it says, "Fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom." Okay? Now, I would interpret that, respect for the Lord, as the beginning of wisdom. So just the fact that you don't have an invocation and asking God's blessing and assistance tells me that you haven't begun wisdom. So down here at the bottom, it says action items, renewable energy and electrification, infrastructure enhancement. That to me is, I'm telling you that from my point of view, that's the government trying to rope you into something that you are going to regret down the road. And I think since it's under action item, I guess there's probably not much you can do to change your mind. What I'm telling you is not wise.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Patty Lush from Norfolk. And as Harry mentioned, it's brought to my attention that the commission, the board of commissioners have received the information about a grant, a city grant from Michigan Public Services Commission. And we all know that grants come with other stipulations and promises that we have to make and mandates that we have to abide by. And from what I understand is that some of the obligations that we may be looking at could be financial in nature. The public does not know this. We've not been informed. Also, promising to convert to all electric vehicles, including all sheriff's fleet, mandatory flat screen televisions throughout the government building for monitoring purposes, mandatory change of heating, cooling to all electric, things like that. Things that the public needs to know, that this is what is inside of this grant that you are proposing to vote on at this time. You are to do, we are, we're your boss. And so as an employer of you, I am asking that you would reconsider this, slow down, and as Harry said, there could be a lot of repercussions if we're not taking a really close look at this. Personally, I would rather see our money better spent by raising commissioner salaries in order to get younger, more interested commissioners on this board. We have, I mean, look at us. Look at the commissioners. They're, you know, they're speaking from a generation that's not even, that doesn't pertain to them. And we've got young people who are passionately against some of these things. But they have families to feed and jobs to take care of, and kids to take care of. And so it would have to be worthwhile to give up a job that's being paid a visible income in order to do something like this, which is more valuable than doing what we're doing here, what you're doing here in terms of this electric stuff and electric vehicles that...
Thank you. That's your three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, Jim.
I would like to ask right out front, form extension. I know that's the last thing you want to hear from me. What I'd like to show you pertains directly to the security cyber connection network that was issued a few weeks ago. And I showed you that last week in video, the last part of it. It came out in person, but through viewing the video of it, it was really hacked up. You really can't hear the audio through the last third presentation. And what I want to show you pertains directly to it, and it also involves an action item that you're going to be taking into consideration tonight, that's been moved now, oh, actually it's been moved, I heard, now to an action item. So it's pertaining to that too. So I'm looking for an extension, total thing. I won't even talk at the end of it, no comments. It's 5 minutes and 45 seconds. It'll be planned on.
Jim, I'm not going to allow that because we did give you an hour last week.
No, I understand.
But I would invite you to send the link to all of us, and we can follow up on that later. But you have your three minutes tonight.
I have not seen it.
Which already started.
Oh, no. Supposedly, the Department of Homeland Security, SISA, has installed what are called Albert sensors in lots of places to monitor. They're called Albert sensors. So supposedly DHS has got access to traffic in and out of the networks that might be connected to our voter, our voting and voter registration systems. But I haven't heard a peep out of DHS about it. So either they don't have the data, or they're not willing to tell us about the data. I don't know what we have them for, if they're not going to serve us, other than, I guess, to tell us how secure everything is. Luckily, they always say, I know it's all the evidence here, so why doesn't he give it to us? Wait, I can't speak to that. It'll have to be something you ask Mike. But the Albert sensors is actually a really good point that you brought up. And I don't know if anyone understands what Albert sensors are. But DHS apparently, from what we've read, put these sensors in each voting center across the country, or many voting centers across the country. And their purpose was to actually capture packets on the networks. Now, they only put one sensor on, so I don't know if they're only capturing it from one point or more than one point. But yeah, where is that data? I would really like to know. If our federal government put sensors in to monitor packets on our elections, why aren't they giving those to us? Where are they? I'm very curious about that. The other thing that kind of worries me is that they're putting these Albert sensors in to all these places. How do they know those things don't have vulnerabilities? Because how easy would that be to say, all right, we need to put these Albert sensors in to monitor everything?
Jim, that's the three minutes. Thank you. You could send us the link to that. Okay. Thank you for sharing. Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
It's just over three minutes. Thank you. You can play the rest of it, though, with the last five minutes.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes. Keith.
Keith Doom, Cleveland Township. I'm going to play the rest of that.
...product that was used to hack into their networks. And I absolutely agree. And I'm not saying SolarWinds was in on it, but all they had to do was make one mistake. And that could happen, and it did. So these Albert sensors could be exactly the same thing. There may be something hacked into along them that allowed this. So those really, if they're being inserted into our voting systems, are they part of the certification as well? Have the Albert sensors been certified? I highly doubt it, but I would love someone to prove that they have. And I'd love someone to prove they actually exist and they work. And I would like to see those packets that our federal government apparently captured in those jurisdictions. And nobody's talking about it from the government. I don't know how hard Mr. Barr looked, but it couldn't have been very hard if he didn't find fraud. And the other thing I want to say is, people are going to try to sell you, an elected official, on newer computers. All right, we got a newer, better computer, and this is going to fix this. And more secure than secure. Yeah, secure. So my watch has more computing power than we went to the moon with. Right, because all of Castle did not have this much computing power. You can do rocks with just a very little bit of code. We don't know what they're doing, but it's not trying to be secure. If you're trying to be secure, you'd have a lot less computing power. You'd have a lot less software, and you'd be able to look at all of it for yourself. But that's not what's happening. And they're going to try to sell us on newer computers, on mobile and remote voting. Nobody's got a secure phone. They had to take their phone away from the president because his phone wasn't secure. If they can't secure his phone, then they're going to secure your phone. If your phone's not secure, no vote on your phone is secure. And I don't care what they tell you about blockchain or anything else. Everybody is not an IT professional, and most of the IT professionals are not good enough to even detect, let alone stop or do something about a nation-state level threat. And again, if our elections are not at risk from a nation-state level threat, what is? It's the most lucrative, desirable target in the world. It is the fate of nations. That's our elections. We know they're a target. Our own government said they're a target. And yet, our own government is still telling us, these systems are secure, and they are not. They cannot be. And if I'm lying, prove it. Take your voting systems and your election registration system. Tell them, you're telling me it's secure? Take it out to DEFCON and hand it over to the hackers in Las Vegas. Give them 10 minutes and see if your system isn't playing, you know, an Atari video game when you come back.
Thank you, Keith. Yes, Mr. Ashburn.
Keith Ashburn, Cleveland Township. I thought we were over the election business. I guess we're not. A couple of years ago, Michelle Proctor, the clerk, put on a presentation for this board, I don't know, half hour, 45 minutes, something like that, explaining the election process, which was very thorough and I thought very convincing, that the elections that you folks are responsible for are well-handled by our clerk and the townships and so on and so forth. I would suggest, it won't change perhaps the minds of 60 court cases and audits by Republican senators and so on, haven't convinced anybody or convinced enough people that the elections were basically true and well-handled. But I'd suggest having the clerk put on that presentation once again at one of these meetings to let the voters understand that the elections in this county are well-handled and they have nothing to worry about.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburn. Yes, Bill.
No reason, I'm with Township. And if that wasn't enough to be concerned about, that tape that was just played, I don't know what was or is, will never be secure. This will never be over until there's one person, one ballot, one vote, one day. Michelle, smart, I'm speaking of her, smart as she is and talented as she is at this job, it's a black box voting machine. You don't see what's happening inside there. And Dr. Frank, who's been in 46 or 48 states, he's home three days a week. He's all over the place, talking about this every place he goes. He's able to hack into the voting system where he goes. No, this is not secure. And if you look at the back cover of this, this is a repeat. It says from Captain Cashel, "Election Fraud Method." There's 50 of them mentioned there. Turn it over to the front. This, the alternative view, Linda Raiz from Missouri, she's already done a successful election with no problems. Everything's secure. Two Republicans, two Democrats watching everything, not like a black box machine that no one knows about. And Dr. Frank can break into any of the systems? Just look at these pictures, if you could. That's Linda Raiz. She's a hero. The E-manual in the middle picture there. And by the way, if you go to frankspeech.com and type in Linda Raiz, you'll find this. It's 20 minutes long. Everybody should watch it. It's like a breath of fresh air. You have no worries. We have this system, and this will never be over unless we get rid of these machines. The E-manual, 60 pages, that came from the rules in Missouri. It was already on the books. She just went back to the 70s and 80s. How'd she do it? Oh, yeah, we could do that. And the third picture there is a successfully, and 10 months ago, in April of 2023, they had election in this little county. And two Democrats, two Republicans, watching everything for five hours. No mistakes. Common myths on the second page, cost too much, less accurate, takes too long, not enough people, only works for small counties, all wrong. The findings are the opposite. Saves time, saves money. There's a little overlay there, it's hard to read through, but same-day results, transparency and security, a breath of fresh air. Black box machine or transparency and security? Works in counties of any size.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you. Other public comment? Yes. Mr. Walcott.
Mr. Walcott, Cleveland Township. I'm a board member of Cleveland Energy, Non-Energy Task Force. I just want to repeat what I said on the national state and county, I hope. Policy context, this is an excellent proposal, which has no hidden elements in it. It will actually save money for the county, and I hope that you will approve the grant application.
Thank you. Yes, Renee.
Renee, Renee Twiler, Renee Taylor. I'm concerned about the fiber optic project that we haven't paid for yet. Is it 1.8 million? No one's really told us what's going on with that. And now we're going to be approving this grant. And the way I understand the grant is, we got to put up the money first? Is it like a million dollars that we have to put up? How much?
1.5.
How much?
1.5.
1.5 million? Okay, so we haven't paid 1.8 million for the fiber optic. So we're going to be paying 1.5. I want to think that out. And this is government that we get reimbursed for those funds, right? So where are we coming up with the 1.5 million for the funds that cost us?
These are public comments, so you can raise your questions, but we won't answer them, okay?
I also sent you all the problems they've had with the flash arc. Did any of you open up that link to see what the flash arc is? A concern with windmills? Did anybody look at that? Probably not. There's also in Huron County, there are all kinds of lawsuits from neighbors. And so we don't want to be doing this to our neighbors until we know what's going on. Lois Bailey said something really awesome, that she has these systems in her home. And I want that. I want that. I have solar lights that are motion activated all over my house, and I like that. I want green energy, but I don't want the sheriff to have to worry about his EV vehicle breaking down with a Cincinnati a couple of weeks ago. And I took pictures of two Teslas on tow truck. So before we put up 1.5 million, can we point out where that money's coming from? What this is going to entail? Because we don't have any details. We just have, okay, we're going to go do this, it's an action item. And we have to deal with fiber optic. We still don't know about that. We still don't know about the IT invoices from last year coming into December and what's going on with that. And we don't know about the lawsuit with the task force. So come on.
Thank you.
Help us out here. Help us out here.
Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Phil Dutton. I'm a Northport resident. I'm not that familiar with the details of the solar project that's being proposed and that is coming up to turn the board. But I wanted to express my strong support for it. I've been working in the renewable energy industry for 44 years now in wind, solar, and hydro. And it started from motivation during the oil embargo. I've been fighting for renewable energy for that many years and working professionally to make it happen. It's only recently that it's become a bit of a vindication for me because it's now cheaper than the alternatives, so to speak. And I've seen too many public policies driven by our insatiable fight for resources that don't exist in our neighborhoods, including wars that are conducted overseas for the sole purpose of taking the oil. I'm so glad that coincidence has landed us in a place where solar and wind and hydro are now cheaper. Thank God for that, because if it wasn't, we'd still be fighting wars. It's safe. It's effective. It's cheaper. It's renewable. It's green. And it solves a lot of the problems that we've been having for a long time. So I just wanted to express my support and appreciation. And I've seen many carports. I work for a consulting firm, but I've seen many carports successfully installed and operated. And they're very unobtrusive, very effective, and very energy efficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Other public comment? Yes. Mr. Makowski.
Evening. At a meeting last Tuesday, Steve Makowski, the mayor, we had this document this year, but it was not part of the packet for anybody to see beforehand. So I searched through this packet trying to understand all the costs that may be associated with this installation. And this document has 13 pages. I can't find a page with all the total costs involved. Whoever's money it is, that's whatever cost of installation. So I'm trying to see, asking for a lot, but I can't find any dollar value associated with the installation of these solar panels on this campus property. As regards to county commissioners approving it, it's very easy for you to approve it. It's no skin off your back. It'll be gone in two to four years. Let somebody else deal with it, whatever the problem may be. Don't think about it very hard because it won't be around. So it's disparaging to understand that this short-term thinking decisions are made on our behalf, but we have to suffer with the long-term benefits of whatever they are. Unless electors of the county will officially petition for it, commissioners must not proceed with plastering all the land on this canvas and all these buildings with thousands of tons of glass. Very redeeming damage. Ranks, head generals. Ranks, presidential generals. I'm anxious to see what the total cost will be to install all this stuff on this canvas. Brownfield Development, there was a hearing here about four or five months ago. We asked about five, six questions and we were advised commissioners would respond to those questions and give us an answer. We are still waiting on those answers or maybe we misunderstood. We were told that our questions would have some answers to this. Later on, we didn't even talk about the May 11, 2021 situation. The title, "You Can't Find Your Innocence, I Hate You, There Are Others." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Mr. Hunter.
John Hunter, Van Township District 2. Again advocating for renewable energy. Updated facts and figures from my solar ray that went on in 2019 and total for the end of today. In total, I have not added 48,940 pounds of carbon dioxide to the atmosphere. I have not added 1,300 pounds of sulfur dioxide to the atmosphere. I did not need 16,100 pounds of coal to be mined. Now, you do that math on 50 people in this room and watch it grow exponentially as you count the rest of the county and I and I. I have not yet heard a single valid reason why the board of commissioners would not apply except the grant and the MDSC. And some of the reasons I have heard, I just leave my head scratching. You get what you pay for. You spend a buck twenty-eight for solar lights, don't complain when they quit working. My solar headlights have been on, working flawless, they've been four years. I only turn them off when the main lights are out. Solar panels are not recyclable. Well, according to EPA, glass composed 75% of the weight and glass recycling is well-established in this area. Other materials include aluminum frame, copper wire, plastic junction boxes, and are easy, easy to recycle. If worse comes to worse, I'd rather have a solar panel on a landfill instead of getting within a mile of highly radioactive nuclear waste dry trash or wet pool. There's no sense for solar power because China, until China does something. While China is the largest producer of solar energy in the world, the United States comes in a dismal and distant second. It's a perfect time for us all to get together, join together, spank China, and become number one again, actually. The next issue is difficult for me and may be delicate. And I mean no disrespect to anybody. But I've visited many Civil War battlefields, monuments, and cemeteries. I've run along the Trail of Tears, visited one with me. I've walked many Western battle sites and those cemeteries. I've been to Washington, DC frequently, walked Arlington, been to the Wall of Memorial several times. I remember when Maelyn designed the Vietnam Memorial and controversy surrounded it. Some people did not like it, but the walls were black and it was somewhat very below grade. I made many chalk etchings there. And I would not view solar ray as disrespectful to many living veterans and certainly not to those who gave their all. Governor wouldn't sign bills to transition Michigan to clean energy by 2040. By that time, many of us here today will be elsewhere or in some other form, one way or another. But I hope that the objections floating around are not just simply political fear. Unfortunate, I know that, I pay my property taxes, federal taxes, Michigan taxes on time. It mustn't include services I don't maybe need. And if I'm due a refund, it's paid in a time of matter. These taxes support other communities and people I may never visit. But eventually, they raise the standard of living for all.
Thank you, John.
One characteristic that I use to define the word.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Public service is the middle name. That's what they do. Please accept this.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yeah.
Am I missing somebody? Thank you very much for your public comments tonight. We will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Any commissioner comments? Yes, Mr. Kramer.
This is completely superfluous. I don't know if you all know this. I am from Mesek, Michigan, which is predominantly red. And I have been observing, all of you, every night and all of us. And I just heard a thing today on a book I was reading, and I think it's really relevant to all of you. Speaking of wisdom, it was a native saying that said, "Holding two opposite ideas at the same time is wisdom." And as we get further and further down the road with all of our ideas, we have all really a room full of passionate people. And I'm really, really honored to be here with all of you. But I want you to remember that there are 8 billion people on this planet, over 8 billion, right? So none of us in here, not a single one of us, have all the answers. And someone has a different perception than you, then we need to honor those perceptions. And I would really challenge all of us, especially here behind this desk and for all of you too, because these are our neighbors. And yep, this side, for the most part, you're all gonna be solar energy. This side, for the most part, not so much. And you're really concerned about voting. I challenge you all to see our concerns as opposed to just negating them. That's all I'm really looking for, because I really would like to sit in that position. I'm having a hard time with this dissonance that I'm constantly seeing. So let's just honor our neighbors and try to move forward with some dignity and respect. That's all I'm asking. And I thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Other commissioner comment? Well, I have an announcement. The announcement was, I came to vote today and it was so easy. And thank you to our clerk and our clerk's office staff for making that available to us. Thank you. We are now down to our consent agenda items. And we have taken three of those off of there. But I'm looking for a motion to approve the others. Or somebody want to take anything off? Yes, Mr. Norgar.
I would move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support. All those in support of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, 7-0. Thank you. We are now down to our first action item. It is our Energy Futures Task Force. We have three commissioners sitting behind the desk here that are on that task force. And we have the chair of that task force, Joe DeFor, is coming forward. Thank you, Joe, for all your work. And Joe has, would like to kick this off. He's got a response to some of the things he's heard over the last week. And so we would invite him to do that. You all have a copy of that in front of you.
I apologize. Joe asked this at 6 o'clock, if we could get it on PowerPoint. And unfortunately, we did not have anyone with the technology to be able to do that tonight. So I made copies for everyone.
I would remind us all that Joe also sent us a very large packet of information and the grant application that we all have too. And that will be on our website as part of this meeting, right, Michelle? We'll make sure it is.
You now start uploading.
Yeah. Joe.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all again. We have a task force tonight. But I thought it might make some sense. Before I begin, some of the public comments earlier related to this project, and I think if it's appropriate, I can make some clarifications. Is that appropriate? Speaking forward for the room in general? First of all, the comment was made that the public hasn't had much of a chance to know about the facts of this. This is the third time I've been here. And I think we've had a fairly robust discussion. And I'm not entirely clear on what portion of the material I submit is ready for the public to pick up. I simply don't know that. But the discussions themselves, I think, as far as, there's been a wide variety of questions. And I have made every effort to answer all those questions. So folks have been in the audience, they heard that. And I made very quick notes here. I may not be perfectly accurate. I think the comment was made about changing over the entire campus to electricity. That's not the case. The solar project that we are going to be discussing tonight would supply approximately 30% of the energy for each of the two main buildings on the campus. And actually, it's a hair less than that because the numbers don't come out perfectly. But far, far from making major changes to the entire system on campus. Comment was made about electric vehicles. There are zero, no electric vehicles being called for in this region. I will share that the task force has a work group on electric vehicles. And we certainly have done some exploration. And in fact, also, the statement was made something about converting the sheriff's department over to electric vehicles. I met early in this process with the sheriff. And he and I agreed that at this moment today, given the technologies, electric vehicles are not a fit for the sheriff's department. There's no such thing like that in this region. The word monitoring was used. And I'm not quite sure what the comment was directed at. The word monitoring does appear in our proposal. But the word monitoring is very, very specific. In the solar installations that we propose, there would be a hardwired link from the solar back to this building purely for the use of the public, watching the production of the solar energy. Nothing more, nothing less. There's no internet, there's no stuff flying through the air. It's a hardwired link. And the motivation for it is transparency. Because a part of our project has an intention to educate folks. And so, for better or worse, everybody would get to see the production on a day-to-day basis of the solar structures that we're proposing. The word obligations was used. And, well, first of all, I guess the simplest way to say it, because most of us think of money first, is as we've written the budget for this solar project, the county has zero financial obligation. If we're lucky enough to get the award, 100% of this project would be paid by the budget we're submitting. And I would include, we have included a component for the administrator, the treasurer, and the finance departments, and the facilities and maintenance department. Because we fully recognize there will be some time allocation on their parts. So we have carefully submitted wage equivalents into the budget to even cover staffing positions in the county. So that, again, doesn't impact your balance sheet. What is the total cost? I've got a lot of numbers in front of me. Well, let me first ask, Madam Administrator, did everybody get the slide packet as paper down in the audience?
Yes, no, not the audience. I didn't have time to make it for everyone. But it'll be posted, we'll have to post it. So it'll be up on the website.
Well, then, my apologies to the audience. Because I had created a PowerPoint with the intention, as we did at the last meeting, to put it up on the TV for everybody. That's entirely my fault. My only defense is that I was working on this up to about an hour. And I simply wasn't able to produce.
Understood.
So I take responsibility for that. And I don't know how to help the audience.
Well, we will make it available after. So you just can present to us.
Okay. I did create, the PowerPoint is somewhat like the one that you folks saw the last time we presented with updated numbers. I think it's appropriate to begin, though, the project that we've spoken of in the past, let me back up even one more step. The final deadline for submission of this project is 5:00 PM tomorrow. The project, as we've discussed it in the past, is polished, ready to go, and plus or minus ten little words that were misspelled or typos in the packet you got at your last meeting, that is exactly what you saw before. However, folks have shared with me the discussions of concern and questions that occurred, in particular, at the Buildings and Browns Committee last week, I believe it was, and there's a track of this. And certainly, we've had other questions and concerns expressed in this room, some by you folks, our permissionments, and others by the audience. So the team has been working on this grant literally in the last 72 lot opens, has built 50% different project proposal to deliver to you tonight. The reason we went through this trouble, and folks, this was an extraordinary effort by the team that's been working on it. I, I am only the spokesperson for a much larger team that puts all these members and data together. And these folks have been working 15 more hours a day for the last three days, resembling us tonight.
So are you going to go over those changes right now?
In a moment, Commissioner. If you return to that packet, I think that's probably the best way to proceed. And this is the one I'm referring to. I don't know what else you might have gotten, but it's my intention to be the PowerPoint slide. So once again, it begins the way we began last week, with just a simple reminder, this task force was created in December of last year. The mission, approved by the task force, so you folks, was to identify opportunities and facilitate implementation of energy efficiency and renewable energy in the county. The way it was stapled, we have to go upside down, three pages.
Sorry, I wasn't sure what page was going up.
I never know what's going to happen when I hear what you said. The project goals remain the same, nothing's changed here, to reduce county electric bills and to role model practicality of benefits of solar energy in Michigan. That's a big one, because a lot of people think that solar only works in Arizona, and it's simply not true. We wish we had 300 places on, for this and many other reasons, but solar is still viable in Michigan. The third page is also a repeat, just again for context, it's an overview of the county property. Nothing new there. The fourth page has changed just a little bit. The last time I spoke before you, we had two very different project sites occurring in the campus. I think it's, I think I can make a general statement, that the single most concerning, troublesome, and difficult site, portion of our original project, was the ground mountain solar that was occurring across from the Veterans Memorial, on the land that must be shared with Eagle for a future drain field. We've removed that. Hearing your concerns and the community's concerns, we've completely removed that portion of this project. If you flip, and then I'm going to subtract this, if you switch to the next page, which I hope looks like this, let's just all make sure we're on the right page, it shows the law enforcement center. Yes. And so we're over the parking lot for the law enforcement center. This is an array that the sheriff and I have spent a fair amount of time talking about the last I heard. I still have his support for this. He was actually quite pleased in our conversations, because this, at least for the purposes of our project, serves two purposes. First of all, it comes very close to making the goal for the solar to put against a meter on the jail building. There is a sweet spot for how much solar you can put against each of these meters, two meters, one for each of our two major buildings, the two buildings, biggest single users in the entire county system. And that sweet spot's about 200 kilowatts of solar. This particular part of the project, if you were able to study it from the last time you sent the documents out to you, is unchanged. It's, I have to catch up. My paperwork here, 194 kilowatts, the goal was 200. The second achievement, I think, we've gotten out of this particular solution is, historically, the sheriff's vehicles, all of which are internal combustion engines, no electric cars, none anticipated in the future in this grant, have always been out in the elements. Because they're emergency response vehicles, and because some of his personnel might be in the building, still on duty, perhaps filling out reports, doing research, and so forth on calls, they need to be able to respond on a minute's notice. For that reason, inclement weather in Michigan is a real problem for the sheriff in terms of meeting our goal of a nearly instantaneous response. There's two ways to deal with it. They either go out, there was great ice and snow, awkward cars, the interiors are cold, that has ramifications, or they leave their cars running in the worst of the weather. From an environmental point of view, that's not ideal either. So we feel very good about this portion of the project, because it ticks off two boxes. We make the amount of energy for this, for the other building, the jail building, that was our goal from the beginning, and we also do a service to the sheriff's response, emergency There's a nuance to this solution, because, again, we made an effort to work very carefully with the sheriff on this project. Typical solar over typical parking is set at a minimum of 10 feet vertical. We took the time, together with the maintenance and facilities personnel, to go out and carefully look at the sheriff's votes, and carefully consider what kinds of purchases and so forth he might be making in the future. So this particular array is set at a minimum, per the sheriff's request and agreement, of 13 feet off the ground, absolute minimum, everywhere around the parking lot. I, I think the drawings are otherwise pretty self-explanable. The yellow line indicates the big copper wire that has connected the arrays, and where you see it entering the building is the exact spot where the major electrical facilities occur inside the building. We've made sure with this contractor, the cheapest way to do this is by trenching everywhere. Instead, we've expensed in directional boring, so that we can go underneath the parking lots, do no damage to the surfaces, requiring no repairs to the surfaces. I'll flip, and if it's okay with, I think it might be easier for me to take questions at the end, but if you feel the need, if I'm not being clear in particular, at a particular moment of chat, then. Let's, yeah, okay. Let's go to the next drawing. This drawing is entirely new. It should look like this. It is another drawing of the jail building. I'm going to help the audience see this. Another drawing of the jail building. There will be no more drawings of the field across the Veterans Center. It does not exist in this project. This is the substitution for them. There's a large parking lot, the visitors' parking lot is what I've called it, right immediately in front of the front door of the jail building. You can see that what we're proposing is a lengthy linear parking covered array over the far side parking places of this, of this parking lot. This array is set at a 10-foot standard height, because that's cheaper and more cost-effective. You can see, again, the yellow line that indicates the direct link. This particular array will be put against a meter in the administration building, this building. Once again, directional boring has been specified in this project, so that we don't do damage to other structures, sidewalks, parking lots, et cetera. A reasonable person might ask at this moment, if we're going to do more solar over parking, why didn't we put it right in front of the administration building? That's a fair question, and we actually researched it pretty deeply. The problem is really twofold. There are lighting poles out there, and in order to build around the lighting poles to accommodate them, would take custom engineering and far greater expenses to do so than the array where we now are at. The second concern was that, because this is much more of a, what's the phrase, generally publicly used a lot, we thought that there was probably a much higher likelihood that RVs and other large vehicles might be moving through here, and if the array were immediately in front of the administration building, we, once again, would probably have to incur that extra height, just to be sure that some innocent member of the public racing into a meeting like this in their RV or some other taller vehicle didn't clip one of our structures and do some damage. So for those two reasons, it's not much farther for that big electric wire to come over to the parking lot in front of the jail, and when you cross it all out and look at the frozen towns, we land against the jail. And when I say we, I really have to credit the solar contractors here. The reason I asked, for instance, because this array is 172 kilowatts, our goal was 200, and I asked, can we put more solar over the other part of that front parking lot? And they recommended strongly against it, even though they would make money in doing so, because they felt that for a building like this, we needed to accommodate service vehicles, larger equipment that might to get, might need to get in and work on building systems and so forth. It was their experience that it was simply wise to leave the area immediately in front of the building for those types of utility meters. Let's go to the next project, please. Project facts, these have changed just a little bit, in particular, because the second half of the project now is a bit smaller. The project totals about 367 kilowatts. It still supplies something like 30% of the government's solar. To be honest, that might be 29 to 28. I did not have the time to update that. I didn't think that was the highest priority. Once again, as we've said every single time since I've been in front of you, this grant will be 100%, this project will be 100% paid through the grant. Finally, a quick summary of the environmental benefits. Over nine and a half million pounds of coal will not be burned, and these are annual numbers, nine and a half million pounds of coal, over 20,800 barrels of oil will be saved, and over 7,350 acres of forest. This would be the equivalent of planting 7,350 new acres of forest. I ended with the same sheet again. I do some public speaking, and I almost always end with this, because it's a number that's just hard to comprehend. In one, in the span of one hour, the earth receives enough sunshine to meet the energy needs of the entire world for one year. This energy was free, it's infinite. 80% of the new generation in the United States last year took solar and wind for that very reason. It is simply no longer eaten nomically to make new electricity any other way. I've got lots more facts and figures, but I think I should turn it over to you.
Glenn, Commissioner Olga.
Yes, I would like to make a motion, and then we can have further discussion.
Okay.
I would move that the Lelandau County Board of Commissioners approve submission of the MPSC Renewable Energy and Electrification Infrastructure Enhancement and Development Grant.
Can you say version two, please?
Version two, and authorize the board chair, Ty Wessel, to sign the grant application.
Support.
Discussion. You want to start, Glenn?
Our county has an opportunity to save our tax dollars every single month. We can save $3,500 a month. That's not huge money, but in my books, that's real money, and it's worth doing. We also have this unprecedented opportunity to do this with a grant. The MPSC is offering a grant to implement this. There will be no cost to us, and it will benefit the county for the next 35, 40 years. This is a grant, I want to thank the Energy Task Force members who have worked, they had two months to put this together. They have worked really, really hard. And I believe from dawn till midnight the last few days, because I was texting, I was emailing Joe at 10:30 night, at night, and he was saying, "I'm still working on this, Glenn." I appreciate your efforts on behalf of the people of this county. This is a grant application. We still have time to discuss this. If we do not get the application in, that's it. So we're opening a door. There are time for corrections if needed. I'm strongly in favor of moving our county, saving us all money and moving us forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Kramer.
First of all, Joe, you did a lot of work in a week, like, to be able to change it. Here are concerns, come back to us with a better proposal that, you know, crosses the Ts, dots the Is, and I think appeases, you know, maybe not everyone, but a little bit more than the initial plan, I think, has been fabulous. So thank you so much for that. Second, I do want to address, I know what you're laughing back there about, tax dollars, right? Grants. You're, you're concerned that the grants are our tax dollars, and I hear you. And I hear you. I hear you on that. The thing is, is if these grant dollars aren't used by our community, they're going to roll over to the next community. There's no stopgap for us. So if we can choose to utilize this and take part in this grant application, or Grand Rapids will, or Holland will, or pick a county, pick a place, because that's where the money will go. So if we utilize it, we get it here. And then that tax savings will still exist, right? Because we're going to save the county over a million dollars. So that will still exist for all of us, right? So that's fiscally, I think, a responsible thing to do overall. If you don't like the grant cycle, then you've got to go up a step and go talk to, you know, Granholm or whoever else. But not here. We need that money. And if we can utilize it, I think it's best for all of us. Second thing is, I know you guys were concerned about agendas, right? Like a grant, I think I heard, has an agenda. So I'm going to clarify with Joe a couple of things, just so we can see what this agenda entails perhaps. Okay, so does the grant, and I'm looking for perfectly honest answers, does it dictate who we can utilize for solar? Or do we have a choice, like of contractors and where we get the solar? Do we have that choice? Or does the grant dictate who we can choose?
We have that choice.
We have that choice.
We have already, we wrote an RFP immediately in this eight-week process, well before Christmas. Put out a competitive grant, got three responses initially. Refined the project concept. Put it out again as a competitive grant. The grant itself requires three quotes. We did that twice.
Next question. Does it dictate which panels we use?
If contractor chooses a panel.
Okay. But again, we can choose them as well, right? So the idea and maybe the fear behind it is that there's some sort of other agenda happening. And I just want to clarify for everyone that this isn't open, we have the freedom of choice. So I just wanted to clear up those things. But thank you again. I think you've done a wonderful job.
Can you share this tag on?
Yeah, sure.
The contractor that we're working on has done over 1,000 projects. Not most, but many are well bigger than this project. And they pride themselves on using American-made materials as much as possible. Commissioner Watner asked me at the last meeting, the origin of these panels. These panels are Canadian.
I know this from, actually, we tried to make solar, helped Puerto Rico after the hurricane. And so we did a lot of research on solar. And I know that there are certain fine models, obviously, that you can't get from the states and there are certain restrictions. But I think you're headed in the right direction. And I know that there's a lot of manufacturing that takes place in the United States as well. So, but again, thank you. Appreciate all the time and effort you've put into this.
Commissioner Rachel.
So I have a couple of questions. You skipped over one of the slides that was related to project financing. And you had stated, and it says that 100% of the project costs are, and I have, there's always some cost to us. There's never zero, but that's just the way it works. I'll leave that beyond.
We've done our best to.
Yeah. My bigger question is, if I read this, it says 100% of the project costs are the Renewable Energy Grant. Shortening for clarity. Estimated project cost 1.5 million all-inclusive. Grant request 1.2 million.
Correct.
So how does 1.2 million pay for all the costs of 1.5?
I'm glad you asked that. I'm sorry I missed this page. I'm glad you asked it because I would have wanted to expand on that anyway. Especially without visuals. These are big numbers with lots of zeros and so forth. So let me give you an example of what actually happens in the financial movement for this project. The contractor's cost is, you know, I'll give exactly. This is predominantly a solar energy project, other than the few other small items I mentioned, salaries and so forth for staffing and such. The U.S. government has something called the Investment Tax Credit. It's available to every individual, every household, every business, every nonprofit, and every government. For solar projects, 30% of the components get a tax credit back. It's typically a tax credit if you are somebody who pays taxes. County government doesn't pay taxes. So the way it works is it comes back to us as a check, literally a check from the beds to the company. In addition to that, the northern half of the Lower Peninsula and most of the Upper Peninsula are in a region called Energy Communities. And if you're in one of these Energy Communities, you get an additional 10% credit against your project. So, now, let me give you the actual number first and then maybe we can work this.
I think you're, I mean, kind of made somewhat clear. I mean, of the one, the reason the state is 1.2 is the other 300,000 will come from the federal rebate is what you're saying.
And maybe for everybody's benefit, rather than really, really complex numbers. Hoping to include everybody in this so nobody feels like we're trying to pull something over. If the solar for this project cost $1 million, if that were the case, it's more. 40% tax credit makes that $600,000, right? Minus 40%. The grant is written for the $600,000. We, at the end of the year, among all the other papers the Finance folks and the Treasurer folks do at the end of the year, when we reconcile our books with the beds, put in for the 40% tax credit that we 100% know we are eligible for. Because we don't pay taxes, they actually write a check. In the example, that's a $400,000 check. The contractor gets their $1 million, right? They have to be paid the amount they quote. That's our obligation to them. The grant gets written for $600,000. We get $400,000 back and we have zero in. That's the simplest way I've found to try to explain this.
Are the questions done?
Yeah, I guess a couple. I was, I'll follow up on. Does this project budget include any contingency factor for unforeseen factors?
It does.
Can you expand on that?
Right. The grant itself, understanding that there's quite a period between the application, which is tomorrow, and the announcement of awards, which is September. This isn't the first time they've done this sort of thing. They understand that material costs, labor costs, and things fluctuate. We're able to insert a 10% contingency on every single line item in the budget that covers those kinds of fluctuations.
So just to follow up. And first off, I apologize for not thanking you for the Herculean effort it took to that whole thing to put this all together in a short time, the modified plan. So a lot of work put into this. I appreciate that. The agenda thing, just to kind of address it, and it does give me some angst. I mean, I'm deeply conflicted on this project because I do believe solar has its place and I do believe EVs have their place. Maybe not as fast as some people would like it, but I believe it's a part of our future. But when I look at the, one thing that's troubling to me is to see the sheriff rescind his support for this project when he was a supporter before. And I think.
I hadn't seen it, so.
Yeah, it was, I didn't see it until an hour and 20 minutes ago myself, so.
I understood you got an email. Thought you ordered it.
Why did I ask?
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, Commissioner Watner sent me something presuming to speak for the sheriff, but I hadn't seen any.
He sent you an email and I thought he said he spoke with you as well.
He didn't speak with me.
He sent you an email.
It's possible that he sent an email and communicated through the.
I think it would be important for Joe to read that and respond to it. He does have the sheriff's email.
Sure, okay. I'm fine with that. And I just will follow up after that. I think where the angst comes from, so.
There's only one, a handful of small words that I think are not factual, but otherwise I understand the sheriff's certainly has a right to change his mind.
And he believed that there were EV mandates in there, which they're not.
Those were the words that I would clarify. It says including EV and other infrastructure mandates. And I don't know what that means. I can't think of how that applies.
I think I see where the confusion comes in, is some of the concerns on some of the people involved here. If I read through the actual grant application itself, which I hadn't had time to fully get through. So if I go up, there's a section on page, let me get there, scrolling up, give me just a moment. Starts on page nine and it says project objectives. And the project is this project that we're applying for a grant for. So if I read down then into project objectives, and in fact, there's a follow-up at the bottom part of the grant application that says the metrics will be how much have we met the project objectives? This is all, that's a part of the grant. So if you get to some specific points where these concerns come from, I'm scrolling down now. Part of the project objectives, decarbonizing buildings and electrifying transportation. In addition to the plan is clean electric grid pillar, part of the county's broader commitment to electrifying and decarbonizing its operations and otherwise advancing sustainability. Going down, Energy Futures Task Force, providing low-income leadership and developing plans and seeking funding for ongoing investments, reducing energy waste in our facilities, and eventually electrifying their space and water heat, and a transition to our 100% ICE vehicle fleet to EVs with sufficient on-site charging infrastructure. This is actually described as a project objective. Commitment to environmental justice is a project objective. And then as I scroll down, and some of the other things these concerns come from are delineated in as a project objectives. And project metrics will include percent completion of the project objectives. So it's confusing to us if these aren't required, why they're mentioned, and why they would be part of the metrics of the project objectives. And what position would we be in then if we accept this grant to do not complete those objectives as outlined in our promise in this grant?
Would you be kind enough to scroll up and tell me which major sections? The sections are the C, the D, the E, the F.
E.
And what's the title for that?
Project objectives.
Project objectives. So if I recall correctly, I understand your concern about that wording. That section, as I recall, was a requirement by the grant to relate our project to the government's, excuse me, the governor's Michigan Clean Energy Plan. And that section was intended to speak in a more broad way about other activities and objectives that are absolutely taking place within the task force, but are not a part of this grant application.
It seems odd, the wording, project objectives. And I'm not a legal scholar, but I get worried when we sign a document that says you're going to give us this money and for this money, this is what we're going to do if we're not going to do it.
I think we could do two things. I'm comfortable, first of all, I didn't bring my laptop because I didn't think I needed to scroll.
Anyway, part of it is explanation where these concerns are coming from. Because a clear and plain reading of this looks like we're promising to do this stuff.
Okay, so let me respond to a twofold answer. First of all, I'll remind you all that even if we're awarded this grant, you have a 45-day period to decide whether or not you want to accept the money, period. And it's a complete 100% out for you. We also have a six-month period between tomorrow, the deadline, and when the awards will be made. For instance, somebody else brought up the lack of legal review. Absolutely true. I would suggest, in fact, that there should be two legal reviews because there's really going to be two major contracts. We'll have one contract with the MPSC, which we've known about, and the fine print's right in the, at the MPSC website. But this last eight weeks included Christmas and New Year's and so forth. And I didn't think it was likely we were going to mobilize for that during that period. We have six months to take a leisurely review of that contract. And nobody yet has mentioned the fact that we should be reviewing the contract that we would have with the solar contractor. Now, I have no fear of that because they've done 1,000 projects. Nevertheless, it's the right due diligence and it's the right thing to do. So having said those two things, Commissioner, if you'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to delete that language, I'm perfectly comfortable with it because it is not a part of the core of what we're presenting you tonight.
Can I ask a follow-up? It says 100% ICE as an acronym, vehicle fleet to EVs.
Internal combustion engines.
So, okay. So, you know, I would think that we could easily amend that. I mean, that's.
I don't know. I guess my point was, I think, to try and help understand why there's these concerns because a plain reading of it says it is project objectives and project metrics, so.
Yeah, so we could change that percentage to reflect really not touching.
If you will highlight the language we're speaking of right now so that, I mean, I understand within the context of this conversation, I would be happy if you want to put that as a friendly amendment because it's not a part of this project. It may be a part of the vision of the task force that we were trying to articulate, but I have no fear in eliminating that language.
Glenn?
I believe that is a piece of the vision of our governor and our country right now. But this grant is about solar panels. We submit the grant. We will then do a legal review. We'll do a legal review if we receive it. We can verify all of that. But this grant is only dealing with solar panels. I believe that's a vision of the MPSC with these grants. But we're not committing anywhere in this program to be buying EVs or doing any of those things. This is. This is only solar panels.
And if I'm sounding vague, it's only because there's about 50,000 words in that application.
Understood.
And I don't remember everyone and every sentence and paragraph, but I can tell you the sincere intent is to build a solar project, nothing more. And I'll say it publicly, we're being recorded. I have no objection whatsoever to removing that language if it seems to imply that it's part of this project. Happy to do it.
I think we could do that with the existing motion if we, I mean, you've heard the concern, and if you read that and it makes, make it necessary to include it, that could be eliminated. If that, I mean, I don't think we need a separate amendment for that.
How about if I just added, clarifying this grant, this approval solely concerns the construction, the solar project, the solar project?
I'm still not sure where I sit on this, so I'm not saying, okay, that gets me over the fence, but I guess.
I would be perfectly happy if you took a highlighter and showed me the objective language.
But I think the only way that you clearly get that objective done is to specifically say, section such and such are removed, because us making a motion of what we think it says doesn't change what it legally says.
Correct.
That's just the vision of MPSC.
It's objective and complete is what it says. Go ahead.
We're not getting money for any of that.
Hit the offensive section, that's just fine.
I think it would be B and C, and I have to, I don't know, can I get some help with this from any, I mean, Melinda, you had done a pretty deep dive, can you help me?
Well, I.
You actually brought this to my attention, so I.
Yeah, B, C, for sure.
And I'm sorry, but what was the major section?
Why, why C?
I have to catch up to you now.
Page nine, B.
On page 12.
Page nine.
C talks about environmental justice, it doesn't talk about EV vehicles or anything.
Right, but if you tie that back, that ties back to a coal-fired, clean coal-fired plant in Indiana, so, which is a sliver, a sliver of clean coal generation out of Indiana. So I think the environmental justice, it speaks to the people who live down there near that. It's in the document. We don't have, we don't have the, you know, we already have environmental justice in Leland County, so.
It's also talking about just providing jobs, local good jobs for clean energy businesses. That's my take on that, complete paragraph.
Yeah. See, I don't think it's necessary at all.
If it isn't, have anything to do with solar panels?
It doesn't, no.
Why is it EV in there?
It's talking about the jobs it's creating for the installation of the solar panels as a local company.
Which in the jobs is, I don't know, this contractor that's already been awarded the grant, how many people he employs. Other than that, I see.
I think, I think, I think you could leave to me that part, starting with residential benefit from the cost savings and other benefits there, including jobs. I'm still on, I'm still on 12.
C.
Well, so if you struggle with that last sentence, Commissioner Lautner, is that, I guess I don't see a problem with the last four or five sentences of C.
So it's.
What exactly? We just are not committing to EVs.
No, this is separate, totally separate. This is environment.
That's just.
It's just, it's talking about the savings that we will incur as a county will be passed on to everybody equally, because we'll have more tax dollars to pay for other things. So it's just saying that it's, it's going to share that savings to all, all people that live in the county. So I think that's a really important thing to say.
It talks about Alice households.
And the first part, if you want to get rid of the justice tool, screening tool.
Yeah, I guess that's my point. If I were going to try and parse this out, and I'll leave it to Commissioner Lautner, we're trying to, we're kind of out of order here, Chair, but are we okay to have this discussion in this manner at this point?
If everybody's comfortable, it's hard to write a document as a committee, but let's, let's see if we can do it quickly.
We start with however, you know, there's a stark inequality in this area. In fact, 46% of households are at Alice threshold. That's a fact. That's a fact that we've all been presented many, many times. So there's no reason for that to not be.
I think I heard the concern was about promising something we didn't intend to deliver on.
Yep.
Yeah, and that concern is EVs. I think we need to delete it that. If this thing is talking about the benefits as a whole, that's not something we're committing to. But I'm willing to say, we, in this motion, we are not committing to purchasing.
Anything beyond a solar panel.
Yeah.
Everything in B.
This motion.
So you would.
So that's a friendly.
Yes.
A friendly change in your motion, do you have that?
No, I've got to get my copy back. I can't take this.
So Commissioner Algar, are you saying you would, you would agree to eliminating section B?
Oh, okay.
No. Any commitment beyond solar panels. That this motion is, is a grant, would not extend to anything beyond solar panels.
I guess I just have to say that doesn't satisfy my concern in that it just says, this is what we think we said, but the document says.
On the other hand, we've got 45 days, and I don't think we need to edit.
I really don't mind editing, if we can do it clearly in a time-efficient way.
No, it won't be time-efficient.
If there's not a consensus, we'll just stop. I'm fine, I just brought up.
No, we would have to take.
Jamie, Jamie had something, and then Douglas, see if we can bring closure to you, and then I bet Melinda has something she wants to say.
Maybe right. So I haven't been following along. I guess I just have questions. Is Doug's question about the, it's the grant itself, right, the actual grant, not what?
No, I think he's referring to our application, the language in our application.
Okay, so not in the.
This is language we insert into the application template.
Okay, so that's what we're concerned about. Okay, then.
I believe this particular, for the moment that I had to look at it, I believe this section, the application was asking us to relate to the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan passed last year by Doug.
Okay.
And the intention of this section was to speak more broadly for some of the other interests and work of the task force. But again, I have no problem eliminating it, because in the literal sense, you're right, it does not apply to what we're asking for tonight.
No. Okay, so what are you willing? So what are you willing to take out?
Well, I'm.
He's not looking at it.
So in B, we're just going to pretty much reduce that to just saying that we're going to advancing sustainability. I think we can all agree on trying to be more energy efficient, and I think that's what it was driving at. Joe just put some very specific numbers and goals in there, but maybe that's not necessary. Right, Joe, or?
Okay, so.
Again, easier for me to comment if I can see it's that language.
You know, if you wanted to, I, there's, someone who's read this, who works for the MDA, and they said, well, there's a lot of fluff. So I understand why this was written with a lot of fluff to try to get the grant. So this is a grant application that will go to the state. If you back up even further, so you start talking about the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan. It talks about the plan, and the plan is part of the application. The plan further states, the Leland County's proposed MPSC-funded renewable energy grant project is more closely aligned with the clean electric grid, et cetera. I'm on 11. So, but there again, it talks about the plan's pillars related to decarbonizing, decarbonizing buildings, electrifying transportation, it says it there again, and protecting Michigan's land and water, and it talks about the clean grid. Yeah, in all of B, as we said on page 12, I, that was, I had, I had a real problem with that. Further, there was the, the, us, it says we have to dedicate a place in our lobby for the flat-screen television set. I objected to us, us being forced to dedicate a spot for that. It spoke about tours, having to allow tours on campus.
Did you begin a science class in school?
Excuse me, I'm not talking about science classes in schools.
We are.
We are, yeah.
We're talking about working with schools.
You're talking about bringing tours, tours to the campus to see the solar.
Your teacher never took you out in the world.
No, can you, we're talking about this grant right now. The grant spoke about us having to allow tours here of schoolchildren, correct?
How is that different from what I'm proposing?
Are they going to view the solar panels?
I would hope so.
I would hope so as well, except that now they're all proposed to be on and around and near the jail. One more thing that the sheriff objected to. We have other things we, in our proposals for our budget, to actually put fencing and/or gate up around his, his vehicles, because he's concerned about the safety of his vehicles.
And he hadn't expressed that concern since he made it long before the grant came along. It's been an interest of his.
So you also were asked to take out, I'm assuming you did not touch on a couple things you were asked to take out that were in here about Sherrilland Electric, correct? You got that email, and you took those out. I couldn't find them in here.
I'm going to correct you. I was not asked to take things out, I was asked to substitute some different language, and that's all done done.
Okay, so you took out the main paragraph you were asked to take out, correct?
I substituted the language I was asked to substitute.
Have we seen the substituted?
Four words different.
Did we see the substituted?
You're trying to paint this.
No, I'm trying to ask you if it got done, because I.
I need to, I need to, I need to make sure there's order and respect, Commissioner Lautner.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Did you understand that? Good. So when you earlier stated that you made some changes, you did not cover that. So you took out the tens of thousands of dollars worth of, you took that out, because I was looking for that in here, and you also didn't cover it when you were going over this. But that's been changed? Do you have that?
Yeah, the request came in yesterday, I think, and yes, it's been substituted, so are you now?
No, I just wanted to see it.
Saying you're unhappy with the substitution?
I didn't say I was unhappy, I said I wanted to see it.
Well, you can see it in the package.
No, I didn't see it. I didn't see it at all, so I don't know, maybe you can tell which page that's on, in the new package? Did I miss it?
It's in the grant application. It's in the grant application that was sent to all of us, and the language was changed. I did see the communication from Rachel.
Communication, good. All right, so we have some other things we wanted to cover, and perhaps you can show us, what is the name of the company, the solar panels that come out, out of Canada? What is the?
It's called Canadian Solar.
Okay, so Canadian Solar is tied in with the Chinese, they're assembled in China.
You know that for sure?
Well.
I do not.
Okay.
Do you know that?
Yep.
You do?
Well, I'm Googling it. Every article on.
We pulled up an interesting fact the other day that was blatantly false, so I'm just a little busy.
Our Canadian solar panels.
Do you want me to relate that for the audience?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. DeForrester, I don't think we need to go there. I think what we do is, let's make sure we hear from everybody their concerns. We're not going to please everybody. At some point soon, we're going to follow the question, and we're going to vote.
Sure, well, we can get that back to us. Let's look into Canadian Solar, because everything I've found on Canadian Solar has Canadian Solar Chinese. So I just wanted to clarify it, something you said. So the contractor has already been contracted, correct?
No.
No.
We have not had a grant award.
Okay, but you selected, you said you did an RFP, and you selected your contractor already?
Through the competitive quoting process, we have favored contractor.
Okay, so earlier you said that the question was, would we choose? But we don't choose. We won't choose. We won't use our competitive bid process here. That's something that's already been done. So I just wanted to see, that's the way we understood, we won't choose. Is there a separate audit that has to be done? Does anyone know if there's a separate audit? That question came up.
Of the grant, of course.
Separate from our audit or included in our audit?
I would assume that we do this like we audit all of our, all of our, all of our grants.
Okay.
The grant application asks for audits of the county, because they're trusting us with a large sum of money, and we've provided that with the assistance of their finance office. I guess it would be a matter of your policy where there is some further audit required. It's not required by the grant.
Okay. Challenges. Now, but I think Doug started to ask a question earlier about the other unseen expenses. So the other things that, and I couldn't find it in here, and I don't know if that's something the contractor would do, but you said they set aside a certain amount of the project, 5 or 10%, did I hear, for overages?
We are allowed to include 10% for contingencies for unforeseen events.
Okay, but that doesn't cover then the remediation of the solar field in the future. Who covers the remediation of solar field in future?
You would own the solar field, so I guess that would be your concern.
That would be county's expense.
I would have a question though for you. Who covers the remediation of our cell towers, of your Varnout, of your various other infrastructure? It's really interesting to me that people come up with questions like this at these unique moments.
Mr. Chairman.
But it's not something that's generally applied.
You don't know that. You actually have no clue, the questions we ask when it comes to those things.
I'm asking, please, in part.
We do ask those questions. That is what I am telling you, and that is our job. So the remediation of a solar field is very, very serious, and if that is going to be a cost of the county in the future, the county needs to know that. So I think you answered the question, the cost would, I think you said it would be the county.
I need, I need to bring us back to respectful conversation.
Thank you.
Can we give you a break?
No, no, please, I've got more questions.
You've had your five minutes. I'd like to go to, we'll come back to you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, though, I haven't even had my five minutes, it's been interrupted.
I'd like to go to Commissioner O'Rourke, and then we'll come back to you.
I've just been listening here, and I learn a lot by listening. We're going to remove this part, and this part, and change this, and agree to that, and whatever we send in on the grant is what we have to live with. I just don't see how everybody can get this together, remove part A and B in this, make everybody happy, without running it through legal by you getting in the mail tomorrow.
To clarify, if I may, it absolutely requires a legal review. No doubt about it, that there are two contracts here, but you have six months to review, and I think the worst thing you could try to do would be Russia review.
I agree, but tonight, then, we just can't get this done, and we never want to take a little piece of that on this and what we send in tomorrow. And what you're saying, okay, now we got it in, and we're going to, we're going to review it now with legal, so.
Commissioner, I only heard one substantive request for removal, and that was make sure we're not asking for beyond the solar project.
Yeah, I liked Gwen's thing of solar.
And I think we got to do that.
But it's got to be reviewed before we send it in, before tomorrow, it's got to be reviewed by this board. You're going to, you're going to make a motion or send something in, and this part's going to be done, or this, no, sir, it's not going to happen.
Commissioner, can we go to Commissioner Kramer, and then come back to you?
I haven't spoken.
Oh, Commissioner Rush, let's go to you first.
No, that's fine. Yes, I would like just to remind everybody in this room that we have an opportunity to say no to this grant. This is just an application to submit our grant. In September, if we get a letter that says we're awarded it, then we'll have how many days? I think 40. I think forty, you said forty-five days. And we have six months before that to work on all these details at our leisure, not at nine o'clock when we have a full agenda yet to go. This is absolutely ridiculous in my point of view. We are not committing anything other than submitting an application to receive a grant to help us move forward in finances and environmental concerns and just doing the right thing. I want to call the question.
If Mr. Allen wants to, I promised her a statement.
Well, I just was simply saying that I did reach out to legal counsel, and they did confirm that we would have time to review the grant application if approved. So I just, for, to protect the county and everything, I did clarify that, so, for what it's worth.
Can I call the question?
You may call the question.
I'm going to say one second.
Uh, yeah, second.
All those in support of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion fails. I don't think we've had, I think we need to make sure that everybody gets their chance to talk. Yes, Commissioner Kramer?
Um, first of all, I just want to thank Melinda for being Melinda and doing Melinda things. She questions all of these things, and I think that's important, right? Like, we have questions, we should get answered. That's important. This is discourse. It's ugly. It doesn't feel good all the time. We're here, we're doing it. Um, second thing, Melinda, to talk about the tours. Um, my daughter, who was in the Boy Scouts, because we live in a different world now, guys, and girls can be in the Boy Scouts. Um, we planted trees right over by the sheriff's department a number of years ago. So those things happen on this campus, and we should promote them because it's really important for kids to see how all of this functions together. And, um, but I appreciate that, too. And I appreciate all of the questions. I think hard questions should come, but I think that this is an opportunity for all of us to save money. If we were to put a giant oil rig out front, you'd hear all of us liberals freaking out, just like you guys are freaking out right now. The thing is, is that we can all come together, I think, on the fact that we could save a million bucks. So that's where I'm at.
Would everybody agree to let Commissioner Lotner speak one more time, and then let's vote?
Better. So, um, yes, thank you, Jamie, for being Jamie.
Hey!
How are you feeling?
I do my best.
Um, so I think it's going, I, I am absolutely opposed to sending something forward. It reminds me of, well, we have to pass it before we can read it. And I'm very, very concerned about the, um, about the possibility of, of these things that are, just seem to be written in stone in an application to go for money. I did have at least three people tell me they could not find this document online. They looked for it, couldn't find it. That was a real concern for me. Um, I've got concerns about, you know, I know these have to be fenced. Uh, who's going to pay to fence it? Is that something we have to pay for?
That was the sheriff's wish for his own security.
So...
And I assured the sheriff that that would not fall.
So every other, all right, so fencing does not have to be fenced. Uh, onward. I've got a few other things, but I'm going to state this. You know, I, I supported the first community solar field in Michigan. And we've learned a lot in 10 years with that solar field. So what brings me to one of my other concerns, and that's, um, we've already replaced half the inverters on that solar field, at forty-five thousand dollars an inverter. So is, is maintenance going to be county's then? Does all this maintenance fall on? And I see that, and I see that, if I understood it right, because I got my numbers right from the back of this document, which I know the public would like to see, which was 1.5, I see it looks like 8,000 salary for you, Mr. DeForrester, for helping oversee, right? Did I read that right?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, then, then that might have to be changed.
I'd be happy to clarify.
Eight thousand, 100? Or is that between the two of you? So, all right, I get this...
Could you speak to the warranty? Because I know you did at Commissioner Rexroth's request.
And insurance.
First, Commissioner Lotner, I want to answer all of your questions carefully. But if you'll give them to me one at a time, then I can respond one at a time. Um, with respect to the inverters, um, the inverters come with a 10-year warranty. Commissioner Rexroth, Rex wrote.
Close enough.
Inserting it. Certainly, with a deep background in electronics, asked about that. And in the new budget, we have inserted a 20-year warranty for the six inverters in this project.
Okay.
I think we're ready to vote. I, I don't, is anybody opposed to voting? I think we're ready to vote. I think everybody's...
Well, the last comment that I had to make was if I could finish up. I think that this, I, I would like to see a solar application go to help, actually help those who truly could use help with, Northport, for example. Northport is, is really struggling with that septic, um, the su, the plant up there. Yeah. You're, I hear it from people who live up there all the time. It's going up another $200 every so often for them, and they're struggling. In fact, that one young family is moving out. They were just telling me for that reason, and probably will be renting their home.
Can I just start on how the septic system?
As, Mr. Chairman, as I was telling you, that I would just as soon as go for a grant that perhaps would help Northport, that would help those people who are being directly injured with costs every single month on that. You've got a windmill, you have, don't even know what to do with. It's not, it's not supplying any energy for you anymore. Direct, direct solar panels on some homes of our Alice people, perhaps. Um, something other than, um, you know, this, than this grant. And that, that's where I would rather see it go direct.
Thank you. I haven't been able to express my view, and mine's real simple. Uh, I have a, uh, a bunch of grandkids and a couple of scientists, one published author in the field of the economics of solar electricity. Uh, I take it seriously. I am very thankful for Joe's work and Leland Energy's work in revising and listening to us. I, I trust your attorney's right when he says we have plenty of time to do a legal review. We've got plenty of time to work with the, with the details. I am going to support this, and I'm ready to vote on it. So, everybody, you...
No, I, I have a question. Is this, is this grant going in or is there a modified grant going in?
Yeah, I guess, maybe, maybe the thing is, what is our motion?
Should I clarify my motion?
We state your motion reflecting what we said about what was re-eliminated.
Um, I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the MPSC Renewable Energy and Electrification Infrastructure Enhancement and Development Grant with one change, and that is Section B, page 12, ending that paragraph after reducing energy waste in our facilities, period. Um, and authorize the board chair, Ty Wessel, to sign the grant application.
Is that okay with a second?
Yes.
Do you have that, Michelle?
On page 12, where, it's part B, and where does it end?
I could help with that. Need help with that, to what line number, for instance?
It's the fifth line down.
First paragraph?
Yes.
Okay.
So reducing energy waste in our facilities, period.
Okay.
So it's been moved and seconded.
So that's the only sentence you're going to keep on a B? Is that what I'm understanding you're saying?
I just keep the stuff above that and eliminate the rest of B. Which goes on to talk about the future, which we don't need to...
So you still keep B, decarbonizing buildings and electrifying transportation?
No, no. Energy Futures Task Force is providing Leland County leadership in developing plans and seeking funding for ongoing investments in reducing energy waste in our facilities, period.
So you want to get rid of the first sentence, he's saying?
So that's the only, what you just read is the only part of B you're going to keep? That's what I'm trying to understand, that we all understand what you're...
Well, a broader commitment to generally electrifying and decarbonizing, we're not seeing anything specific there. Is that offensive?
I think you need to take out all of B, is what you're saying.
I think you need that first part for the grant. And that's very general.
But we don't, we don't, by the sounds of it.
And all the specific stuff follows that. There's nothing specific there. We have an overall goal of improving our...
Highlight on my report was...
That'd probably be helpful, because I'm still confused on exactly what's in and out.
We appreciate the patience of the audience. Thank you.
Well, it would have to be both. Maybe you just want to leave in there, starting on the third, third line down, as described above. The Energy Futures Task Force is providing Leland County leadership in development plans and seeking funding for ongoing investments and reducing energy waste in our facility. I think that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah, and then just eliminating the rest.
I understand that.
I wasn't listening to the first thing you said. I'm sorry, I was, I was, I came in at the end.
Yeah, I was, I was saying the third, third line down is what? Um, beginning with, as described above, and ending at facilities.
Advancing sustainability is offensive to you?
The, the reason, the reason we seek compromise is to get more support. I don't know that there's anything that we're going to do to, to satisfy the concerns of at least a couple of people. Uh, so let's only deal with substantive changes that are essential to getting people on board if they want to get on board.
Yeah.
We can make that work. I needed clarification. That's in amendment to paragraph one of that section.
Paragraph B.
This paragraph two, as we implement, is that to be deleted in its entirety?
Yes.
Deleted?
Yes.
Okay.
So the last word under B is going to be the first one, two, three, four, five lines to the word facilities, where there'll be a period.
And then that's it.
And then everything, starting with the pair in and, down to in the future pair, and is out.
Correct.
Got it.
I think we need a roll call vote on this, and I think before we vote, we need to remind ourselves that we have plenty of time for a legal review.
Yes, thank you.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
No.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
No.
Commissioner Rexroth?
No.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Four, three.
Thank you. I would like to, I would like to take a five-minute break.
Yes, thank you.
And the board has just directed me to sign, uh, the application, so that's what I'm going to do.
Here comes the...
Thanks for all your work, and especially the veterans getting away from it.
Oh, I took what I can.
And I'm, I'm well going yet.
Thank you, Mr. DeForrester.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
If I may add 10 words. I'm only the spokesperson. There was a big team behind this work, and they all deserve...
Please share.
Whether or not you agree, they deserve the recognition as good citizens.
Pass our, pass our thanks along to them, please.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back on our agenda, and we're at the Senior Services Committee.
If I may, just to clarify, the reason why this is on the, um, agenda as an action item is because it requires a roll call vote. It did receive a seven-zero motion.
Okay. I, I thought we did this. We just need a roll call vote.
Oh, and you stayed out.
Unless somebody has any questions, we can just go to a roll call vote.
Make the motion.
Yeah, a motion would be good.
Yeah. Are you making the motion, Commissioner Lotner?
No. I don't think I've ever made a motion for millage.
Make it a first.
All right, go for it.
I, it's probably quite painful, so no, thank you. I'm not making a vote for millage.
Commissioner Ross, you sit on the Senior Services Committee?
No, I don't, but I can...
I do.
Okay.
But I don't know where the motion is.
It's, um, yeah, what number is it? Number two, isn't it? Yes.
Number two.
Page four. I made it last week. Page four, number two, I believe. Yes. Page four, number two.
Okay. I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve the resolution authorizing millage election for Leland County Senior Citizens Services Millage Renewal and Restoration Proposal and Certifying Ballot Language from Cole, Stoker, and Toski. This is to appear on the August 6, 2024 ballot.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please?
Motion by, I mean Kramer?
Yes.
Lotner?
Yes.
O'Rourke?
Yes.
Rexroth?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Wessel?
Yes.
Alguier?
Yes.
Seven-zero, sorry, I forgot to say.
Thanks, Lena.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Kum byah.
We are now down at the Emergency Management Plan, and I think that's just a resolution. That was, we voted on that before, but we need to make a motion to approve a resolution.
Just to clarify, this is a five-year plan, so thus the several hundred pages was a necessity to complete this document, so...
Proposed motions on page four. Commissioner Rexroth?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve Leland County Resolution 2024 dash fill in the three numbers, Leland County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Adoption as Presented.
Support.
Discussion? Although, uh, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Alguier?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Commissioner Lotner?
Yeah.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Seven-zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Commissioner Lotner's FOIA appeal request. And you do have in front of you the, uh, FOIA response from the prosecutor that was distributed today. Uh, Commissioner Lotner does not have a written appeal, but she's prepared to make the appeal.
Yes, correct, as it presented. This is a, a altered, uh, request. And, um, for the attorney, it doesn't have to cost that much. She said it should just be a quick pick search engine, so it would not have to be, um, it wouldn't have to cost that money, what she said. So what are you, looking for a motion to, to, uh, I think the motion has to be to waive, waive the costs of the FOIA appeal. Yep. I'm having the extra motion. That's all, that's all she said it actually was, is just to waive those costs, do a search engine and, and grant the, the request.
I don't hear a second.
Okay.
We will go down now to the, uh, to number five, the 2024 Rules of Order. Can you speak to that, Deb?
Well, actually, I think the clerk did a great job of summarizing them on page number five. So the two items are the, um, clarification for the items to address the public comment. That would be the first motion.
Commissioner Rex?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners amend the 2024 Rules of Order and Procedure of the Leland County Board of Commissioners regarding public comment as presented. Speakers shall address all comments to the board or committee and...
presented. Speakers shall address all comments to the board or committee and not to individual board or committee members, county employees, elected officials, or the audience. No speaker may assign his or her time to another person. Each commissioner represents a district within the county, and he/she may be individually contacted should greater depth or understanding of an issue be sought. Personal contact is encouraged and helpful to both residents and the board. Public comment at every meeting will be agenda-specific for three minutes.
And clarification, but I think that was first public.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
First public, yes.
Okay. Public comment at, at every meeting, first public comment at every meeting will be agenda-specific for three minutes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Support.
Okay, let's, let's do this again, okay? The public comment at every meeting will be agenda, that only applies for the first meeting, right?
First.
First public comment.
First comment.
First is missing there.
First is missing.
First is missing on that, because I, that came up the other night at the Republican Convention.
So I thought, but I think we amended that motion. So it now says first public, public comment, right? Is that what you have, Michelle?
You, you cannot prohibit open speech at both. You can only do this at once. It can be the first or the second.
So.
So it's the first.
Yep.
And that's what you have for this motion, is the first, right now?
Everybody understand the motion? Anybody want to discuss the motion?
So at the very last, you're allowed five minutes, is that correct?
On anything you want.
Everybody's clear, okay?
Yep.
Commissioner Lautner?
I, I, I think public comment is working right now. I don't see changing it. I think, I think this is a terrible move to, to make to our public. I think it's, I think it speaks volumes to, but we don't want to hear from you, and, and you can contact your own commissioner. This is our public's opportunity, these meetings, and if they choose to come, take time out of their day, drive up here, walk here, however they got to get here, and speak to the board of commissioners. They should be allowed to speak, but to tell them that, you know, you can, you have a commissioner representing you, you can talk to them at any time. I, that, that, that goes without saying. So I, I won't be supporting the change. I think it's working now, and I, I don't think we should be changing it.
Commissioner Kramer?
Ditto.
I'm, I'm confused, because I don't think we're saying we don't want to hear from the public. We're saying we want to do exactly what we're doing, but just a reminder that you also have a commissioner that you can, that you can contact if you want something on the agenda.
Yes.
That, that's just me. Yes, Commissioner Kramer?
It doesn't say that. No, and it also feels like the timing is off then, because this came out right after, you know, highly disputed public comment. And, I mean, I think everyone gets that. And I feel like it's important that everyone gets their time, and that's what we're here for. So.
Basically, it's just saying, we had agenda-specific public comment at the executive meeting. We're just saying we're going to do that for all of our meetings, but at the end, it's five minutes, and you can say what you want. That hasn't changed. And that was just so we can get to the county's business, and the people involved in that business can get back to work.
Commissioner Rex?
I didn't have any comment.
Commissioner Rexroth?
No comment.
Commissioner O'Rourke?
No comment.
Commissioner Lautner?
I'll take theirs.
No.
So what it says is, the beginning of the, the beginning means only to the agenda. We don't want to hear from you or anything else, only what's on the agenda. But if you want to sit here and, and, and for hours, you can speak to whatever. And I, I object to that. I, I think that the public coming up here and saying what they had to say, and trust me, I, for thirty years, I've heard a lot. I've heard a lot. And I've heard it on all kinds of topics. And there's nothing wrong with that. That, that is, this is, this is our, our duty to listen to the public, and, and I thank them for coming, and I'm not going to support limiting it more.
Okay. Anybody else? Let's vote. All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
Motion approved, five, five-two. Thank you. Action, item 5B. Commissioner Ross?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners adopt the Board of Commissioners' state commitment to respect as presented. Commissioners agree to the following commissioner comment, commitments. Number one, recognize the worth of individual members and appreciate their individual talents, perspectives, and contributions. Two, help create an atmosphere of respect and civility where individual members, county staff, and the public are free to express their ideas and work to their full potential. Three, respect the dignity and privacy of individuals and organizations. Four, respect and maintain the nature of confidential, confidential and privileged information and opinions acquired as a result of our, my position. Five, conduct public affairs with honesty, integrity, fairness, and respect for others. Six, avoid and discourage conduct that is divisive or harmful to the best interest of Leland County. And seven, keep the common good as the highest purpose and focus on achieving constructive solutions for the public benefit.
Want to second that?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Lautner?
Again, much of this just goes without saying. And I think this is all well and good. I, you know what? There was a whole lot of this, this, this last year, and I think it's very interesting that this falls on this table right now, especially when you talk about the, the nature of confidential information. So, you know, it, it, it goes without saying, as I said last week, this is, this is nothing that we can hold any of anybody on this board to, each of us. It's nothing that can be held to. And, and I should say, it goes without saying, as I said earlier, it just goes without saying. Perception is everything, right? So you can, you can have the perception that you're debating an issue, but what happens when, what happens when there's no longer respect? You know, you get that, call the question, call the question. And I just think that's disrespectful in itself, so I won't be supporting it.
Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Kramer?
I will be supporting, but I'm really hoping that we can lean into this more as a board, and just kind of everyone. I, I don't believe in just passing something to pass it. I think we, we all, and myself included, need to lean into those, those aspects that we have dictated here, and not think that all of us have all the answers all the time.
That's it. Moving on.
Anybody else? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion approved, six, one. Thank you. We now have item six, the MLI Administrator Search.
It's hard not to get emotional sometimes on all this, and the people and friends we know, and the board, okay, but sometimes we raise our voices.
Number, are you going to number five?
We are on six.
No, we're going to five C.
Thank you. You're keeping us on.
But we're going to do the two, the two percent grant.
Yes.
I don't have a slurp.
On, on page two, the Grand Traverse Band two percent grant, we have two motions we need. The first one is five C to accept the awards, and the second is to enter into contractual. Commissioner Alguier?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners accept the two percent allocation awards from the Grand Traverse Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians as follows. Family court, child and family services, Safe Haven, $5,000. Senior services, LC and Neighborhood Assistance, Assistance Ministry, $34,000. Peninsula Housing, $12,009. Solid Waste Council mattress recycling, $5,000. Solid Waste Council tire recycling, $10,000.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved, seven-zero. Commissioner Rexroth?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners enter into contractual agreements with Safe Haven, Leland County Christian Neighbors, and Peninsula Housing regarding allocations awarded by the Grand Traverse Band of Ottawa and Chipewa Indians during their recent two percent grant allocation cycle.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion approved, seven-zero. We're now on page six of Michelle's handout for the MLI search. Thank you, Michelle. Commissioner Rexroth?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners to accept the agreement with Missional Leadership Institute and Chet Janik for a fee of $4,500 plus travel expenses to assist in a search for an administrator/ CFO candidate.
Support.
Commissioner Ross?
Yeah, again, I voted, I did not vote for this last week, and I'm not going to vote for it again. I had a very long conversation with Chet Janik last week and explained my vote to him, and I asked him to please give me information that would make me feel more comfortable, saying that he is the right person to lead this search in a, in a position that we've been struggling with since 2021. And he did a very good job of explaining how he would go about processing applications and the whole, the whole packet that he proposed to us. But I have heard from constituents, and I have heard from county staff, that there is some hesitation that he is the right person going forward. So I did my due diligence, and I contacted Networks Northwest and the City of Traverse City, and I got a list of ten, which that do not include MLI businesses that do talent searches of this kind. And the only one I, actually, I instructed Administrator Allen to reach out to Amy Sell, and we did get a proposal on Sunday. Yeah. So I understand, and I respectfully will go along with the majority here that feels very comfortable choosing Chet Janik. But I just want to go on record that this is huge. This is what we've been working for, for three years, almost three years. I think it warrants more time, and I've heard that a couple times today, but now it, we don't need time. So I would like this list that I have forwarded to Administrator Allen to be in our, in somebody's file. And next time we come to a situation where we're looking for a, an employee, that we go out for bids, find more people that could possibly do a search for us. Again, I have nothing against Chet Janik. I think he'll do a fine job. He did convince me of that on the phone. But again, I'm just following up, and I, this list, it's going to be in the administrator's office for, for next time, because there will be a next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
I'm going to vote for this. I think Chet is uniquely positioned as our former administrator, and being with the county for a very long time, and, and addressing our needs and knowing and understanding what they are. However, I am going to keep harping on this organizational structure review, I think, that we need to do, because I think we need to know how all of these departments function together, and find out the crux and the reason that we are having the issues that we have had in the past that continue to happen. I don't think it's just a leadership and finding that one person. If you go through five different people for the finance director, and we're having these issues, and they keep reoccurring, it's obviously an organizational structure issue. So we have to address that, I even think, before we bring on someone else. Whether we will or not depends on this board and whether we're going to actually, like, attempt to try to fix these issues, because they're systemic. It's not, I don't believe in individual person. It's a systems problem. So if we can address that, then maybe we could find the right leadership. And that's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner?
O'Rourke.
I, I just think, I, I trust Chet, Chet Janik completely, but the bottom line, we're looking at an administrator and a chief financial officer. As Melinda pointed out in one of our discussions, we're looking for a unicorn. You can only do one job well and do it well. You cannot do two. Okay, so I will go along with you guys, but I'm not, you're not going to find the person. At least if you do, you better open your wallets.
Anybody else? All those in support of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
I think that was six, one. Yes, six, one. And I did reach out to Chet, and I told him that if we supported this motion today, we would ask him to come to the Executive Committee in, in March and begin talking to us about position description and timeline and publications and posting. So we will put that on the March agenda.
Right.
Thank you.
We are now down to item seven, the South Bar Lake Drain Prepayment Authorization. Hi, Steve.
I agree with the point of view.
I think, actually, you received it in the board packet, the email that went out Friday, and it was posted. So it was part of the packet. There was an email from Brian Sensi that was included in the packet, as well as a resolution.
I agree. Part printed in my, and it was attached.
It's, uh, was the last three pages of your packet, starting with the email from Brian Sensi.
Yeah, remember, I've read this. I just got to get to it.
It's, uh, South, South Bar?
Yeah.
It's, yeah. So the county, you want the county to pay $72,639.36.
Okay, final statement. That's the prepayment. You choose.
And then we'll bill the road commission, and we'll get back.
$16,000. Six, fourteen?
Eight, eight, we get 50% back.
Oh, 50% back.
Oh, the fourteen.
Oh, I see, yep.
And then subsequently, we'll reimburse the general fund $101,370.2 for being upfronted since the inception of.
Yep, that's out of our pocket. That's, we've already paid that much.
Right, we're in front of that.
Yeah.
Of this particular grant.
Can I get a motion from anybody?
Looking for motion, motion language, but I guess.
Well, I have a question. There's, uh, there's two things here. Are you asking for prepayment tonight plus the resolution vote? Because this doesn't talk about.
Go ahead.
Okay. We're asking for the prepayment, and then the county road commission, I think we're doing a bit of housekeeping, that they might be a little more formalized agreement that we would be doing them for their share, because the drain can't assess the road commission. The drain can only assess the county. Am I right?
Right.
So for us to be able to capture the fourteen A money from the commission, road commission, they want something more formal.
Also, John Gallagher requested this.
So they're looking for a motion, if, if they want it, that the county will be prepaid your total assessment of $72,639.36 by Thursday, February 25th, 29th. And we have to say where the funds are coming from. Do we know?
General fund.
So moved.
Support.
So. You seconded that?
I did.
So Steve.
Commissioner Lautner?
Steve, I know this is in your purview, to, to do these, and we really don't, don't have a choice. And you know I object to them. I know that this is a little private road right down on Lake Michigan with homes, I don't know if there's single one of them worth less than a million dollars. And so we're going to help them out. And I see, by this resolution, do we have to sign this? It's written that we each individually sign this resolution?
The resolution is actually requested from John.
John.
And, you know, I, I wouldn't be upset if it were rewritten. This was.
This was put together by Clark Hill, but it can be formatted in a more.
Just standard county way, right.
With you all and with Michelle. It doesn't have to be signed tonight, but this is, this is something that John Gallagher wanted, as we move forward and.
Yep.
Build the county road commission for 50% of the 14A, as per the law, so.
Yeah, I think that's the only part, just the one signature. Yeah, all right.
I, I can, some counties sign all the resolutions, I think there's some statutes, but I can put the meeting date, put the resolution, then put those opposed. Yes, those opposed and opposed, and then certify and sign.
Commissioner Lutner?
So if we did not prepay, then we would pay over a period of 10 years. Do you have a, can you do a guesstimate on how much interest we would pay?
I think we're estimating a 5% external, so.
Do we have the money right now to just? Is it budgeted that we just pay it?
When we did the committee of the whole and we talked about our capital commitments, we felt we would be prepaying all of our drains, because our amount that we fronted is almost, well, it is more than what we're actually going to pay. So do you get our general fund reimbursed, I could get it anyway. We have funding, but it's, it's.
Okay.
It's worth it just to pay it.
In a way, if this, if this one, we get this much.
And I know that one is just to prepay.
Okay.
We're just getting it done.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. You got the motion, too? All those in support, oh, it's got to be a resolution.
No, the resolution's next.
Okay. All those in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, seven, zero. Now we have a resolution. I have a motion.
Do we have to read the whole thing?
No.
That would be, did you want me to read it to you?
Let's just read the top, the title of it. It's all in our book, right?
I would make a motion to, I move to Leland County Board of Commissioners approve Leland County Resolution Number 2024 dash, a resolution to request a portion of the county's at-large drain assessment be paid by the Leland County Road Commission.
Or discussion. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Lutner was a yes. Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yes.
Commissioner Rexroth?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Chairman Wessel?
Yes.
Commissioner Auger?
Yes.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yes.
Seven, zero.
Okay. We are now down to our demo equipment. We're on the first page of the green sheet, and we have two, two items there. Speak to that, Deb?
Sure. So as was mentioned earlier, the, the proposal from BIS was presented at the executive session, and it was recommended to see if it'd be possible to have demo equipment, and that was basically declined. So we have asked them to quote two of the speakers for the back of the room and bring that back for consideration at the March meeting, and then look at if there's any other recommendations that they may have at that time as well.
So there's nothing to act on that?
Nothing to act on.
There really isn't.
No, nothing to act on.
Are they planning on bringing in the mics? I mean, it might be advantageous for us to, sorry, speaking of microphones, it might be advantageous for us to, to try the mics.
They actually said they were not interested in doing demos.
Well, that's not very cool. I mean, how can we try it, you know, we got to take a test drive. Okay.
So that'll be back on our March agenda.
Yeah, we might not be.
We do have a Safety Net contract review, and we moved that forward, and you want to speak to that?
Well, I think what was recommended is that the, the motion, I think, that was made at the meeting, was to move forward with a one-year agreement, and based on the, the increase that was stated from Safety Net, so I think.
So wasn't there, I thought there was a, someone was going to legal, was to look at the contract and see if, if, I thought that was the reason we delayed it, is to have legal review of the existing contract and see, do they actually have the right to do what they did? Because we had figures and things in there that, that extended out this year and two years beyond with a fixed price.
And retro.
Percent, yeah, certain percentage.
Yeah, and I, I thought.
Yep, I think you're right.
I thought that was part of our discussion, that the only reason we moved it forward was for that, I thought.
Me, too. Yeah, we weren't ready to accept it.
But I had reached out to legal previously, just to confirm, you know, what the terms of the agreement were. It is through 2027, and, you know, basically, legal had also said that the contract right now, I believe, has a 5% increase in per year. This certainly exceeds that, so that is what I know at this time.
Should we reach out to Safety Net and tell them this will be back on our March agenda, and we're checking with legal?
Okay.
I think that was, that was a concern brought up, that's just what I remember. We may not have any choice, but I just want to make sure they are.
Wasn't part of it that we were changing our part of the agreement?
No.
Because we promoted Leanna?
No, we had asked them, I think in December, if they would consider decreasing the contract amount to reflect the fact that we don't have the hours that was initially reflected from their contract, and they said they would do that. That was one piece, that was approved, and, and when we received the contract with that change, that's when they told us that there was also then changes that they had been remiss in increasing their portions of the increase.
So I guess, just to put a finer point, that specifically, can they do it? And secondly, one of the biggest concerns is the retroactive part. I mean, usually every contract contains some sort of language that says, you have to tell me sometime ahead when you're going to do things. You can't come in and say, you owe me for the last three years, different, so.
What was, two months.
I know it's two months, but I added the length for emphasis, so.
So we won't take action tonight on that, we'll move that forward.
Yeah, there's further questions brought up tonight, so we should also just kind of check into that as well.
Next on the agenda is the Parks and Recreation, and we have two commissioners that sit on Parks and Recreation Commission. We have Kama, and we have Michelle, and.
Melinda.
And we have the chair of the commission here, but I don't think, I think Melinda's going to speak for the commission.
Yeah, so we had moved forward the idea of, of doing a sole source with Gosling Zubek to rewrite our parks plan. In the meantime, we found out that this well exceeds what we thought it would.
Triple.
So, triple, good point. So we, we need a 2025, 2020 through 2029 park plan, but we, we really need to put, put it out for bid. So I just suggest we work with Gail to write an RFP and, and place it out for bid per our, our county bid policy.
I know that's going to put our schedule in jeopardy.
Yep.
The plan is to be done by the end of this year. I doubt we can get one done if you go off an RFP and it takes us two months to get the information back, get the numbers. What I expect that Gosling will end up being a low bid, and what you've seen from the, that I asked you if you saw, and I expect to do, and I will be asking them to change their bid, or change their bid for an update, after talking to Gail. We do not need to do the full-blown public survey, when it's only an update of an existing plan, and that's really what this one's going to be. When you looked at the, when you looked at concession designs for Veronica Valley and the lower centers, and the items that were written goals and objectives for the last plan, there's still a number of them outstanding due to lack of funding, which need to get done in the next five-year plan, so we're not going to change the whole plan. The only one that's getting a new concession design is Miles Timmery, and that is to rearrange some of the assets shared in the park to make them more efficient, to add the pickleball courts that everybody's screaming for. The spaces are eight, so that, that, that is the most significant change for the plan for 2025 through 29, and that, of course, will then have to be put into the CIP and all that stuff, so.
Well, I know, I heard.
We're defending that we sole source to Gosling.
I had commissioners approach me with concerns about the recommendation, so I don't know that we're ready. Somebody want to make a motion?
I move to recommend that the county board of commissioners approve the Parks and Recreation Commission waiver of the bid requirement board policy to contract with Gosling Zubek Engineering to update and create an editable, editable, non-proprietary version of the 2025-29 Parks and Recreation Plan.
Support.
Commissioner Rush and then Commissioner Lutner.
Within that suggested recommend, that motion is this idea that we're getting out of this cycle. We, as, I mean, I've only been on this commission, on the Parks and Recreation, for year, year and a little bit, but we just keep updating the plan, and then we never apply for grants, but we spend money for updating the plan. So I really feel we have to bite the bullet this time, go with Gosling, but insist that this plan will then be ours, and we will be able to make those modifications as we go forward. Again, I've said before, Leland Township is doing this, it's, it's doable. I mean, it would be great to have somebody in Parks and Rec, or in planning that could help us with this, but I think there's a commitment from the commission, maybe I'm misspeaking, but I think it was the agreement of the commission, that we really don't want to pay this every five years.
Absolutely. That's why I'm saying, I want, the end product will be an editable version that we own, because right now Gosling has proprietary on, on the plan. They actually own our plan.
It's ridiculous, yeah.
We can't modify the plan.
Commissioner Lutner?
Yes, this is $17,920. But it's going to be less.
That's way too high.
So, but you're just saying you're going to give these to them?
No.
How are you not going to give that to them? So they're saying you estimate it to.
I get your approval to go ahead and then negotiate with them what the real price should be.
No.
I want them to take that $4,600 public survey out of it. I want them to reduce the first item in there, because he's asking for things to be.
We don't do, we don't work like that. We can't work like that, you guys. That we, we, we can't do that. This, this has got to go out for bid and, and, and exactly do what you're looking for. We need to own our plan, definitely, so we got to make sure it's how it is written. But we can't approve tonight to go into negotiations with this company.
Since any, any other company taking over the work that Gosling Zubek has done has to start from scratch, because they can't get it either. So that bid is going to be more, it's going to be more.
We don't know that.
We, we don't require an as-built, a new thing we have, we just require to keep the plan. When you, you know, I mean.
It has to be.
They have proprietary rights on the document, and they produce the documents to us, but we don't have an editable document that we can't even do anything with. I mean, I'm able to extract all the verbiage out of it.
That's a first mistake.
But I've already been doing that part of the review.
That was years ago.
But I can't edit the document. I can't edit the drawings they've edited, but I can't edit anything that's in the document, because they have proprietary rights to it.
Commissioner Kramer, and then Commissioner Auger.
I'm just curious, how did we end up in this space?
Way before my time.
Yeah.
No idea.
The last one was done in 2019, I wanted to hear that.
Okay.
And I asked Tru about that, she does not know how either, so, and hasn't even been to legal. I did request to go to legal, and.
What do we pay initially for this?
I asked.
$10,700 for the plan they did for the 2020.
So a plan that we can't have?
The plan that we have.
They're saying we don't own.
We paid $10,700.
Oh, but they want to do it again.
Commissioner Auger.
Cool racket.
So have they indicated that they are willing to negotiate towards your end, your stated goal?
We're just going to remove stuff, right?
Essentially, Don Furek had a conversation with the engineer who was working on the Miles Timmery, he comes in time. He initially gave Don a really low-ball number, and then went back and said, no, we, we can't do it for that, and then itemized the document that he sent to Don. He didn't even send it to me, okay? So that's got a bunch of items in, but that's not been negotiated. There's no discussion's been made with Gosling about what's in there and whether they can do it, no. That's a whole nother topic that our discussion has to be had with Gosling to come up with what they're going to do.
Commissioner Rexroth?
What's the ramifications of the timeline? I mean, you're, the whole point of not going out for a bid process, which it would be reasonable to assume, based on the conversations, that Gosling might be the low bidder anyway, but what, what time ramification, what, what difficulty, what roadblock does that present if we go out for?
Well, if, if, if Gosling has to wait to start doing the update until they know whether there have gotten rewards, then, you know, they have to prepare their, you know, we're talking at least now two, three months down the road.
Gotcha. So what I'm trying to understand is, getting it done at date A, what is the ramifications of not getting it done at date A or date B, whatever the deadline is? What, what's the problem that that creates?
Well, the state law that talks about plans that need to be developed, and they're allowed to accept an update to a plan up to the last day of the existing plan, which is December 31st, 2024. So after that, the MGR and whatnot cannot accept the plan. They have to actually get another new, new plan.
Deb, and then Gwen.
So, having served on the Parks and Rec Plan Committee for Elmwood Township, I know that one of the main things is if you don't get your plan in on time, you're not eligible for any of the state funding. So that's the biggest consideration, that we would not be eligible for any grant applications if we don't get our application on on time. That's the biggest concern.
For the entire, for the entirety of the plan duration?
I believe for that term.
Okay. That's what I guess I was trying to, I mean, just, state wants, okay, well, they.
Commissioner Auger?
Is this what the Parks and Rec Commission agreed to? Is this the resolution that came out of your meeting?
Yes, to, 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 to apply for a, a waiver from your rebid policy.
Okay, so this is what the Parks and Rec Commission requested?
Yes.
Okay, I will support it, because they know what they have been dealing with, and they know what their goals are, and I don't feel competent to do a three-minute review and change their mind.
Commissioner Lutner?
No, this is not what Parks and Rec agreed to. We agreed to use them, and it was going to cost $4,500, and they were going to update the grant, and et cetera. That is what we did. This is way, way outside, way outside. This is not how we can conduct business here and go into side negotiations with them. I think we got so many questions we need to, so many questions we need, we need to clear up. In fact, I did ask us to go to our attorney to make sure this is even the case with our understanding, and, and as I understand it is, the park plan will be from the date you get it done in four or five years. So if, if the very worst we could do is miss one year, if, if a company cannot get it done, but this is only February, and I've got great confidence in, in if we were to expedite, so my motion was to, to go out for bid, but I think now we have a motion on the floor already, even though my motion wasn't answered. So I, I move that we table this until March, so we can get more answers.
Support to table?
I supported it.
I think we, do we need a two-thirds or a majority, Michelle, for a vote to table?
Can you bring my cheat sheet?
I, I brought my cheat sheet here.
I think it is two-thirds.
I think it's two-thirds.
So I know Gail was here, I spoke with Gail Meyer. I spoke with Gail Meyer and she was very uncomfortable with this and, and I know also as was Trudy Gala. So I just think we need to table this, get more answers, look forward.
We really wouldn't have anything to lose by going back to them and seeing what the price would be and coming back and know what we're voting on.
They can do that at the time.
They don't. It's to update the current and add the new plan content is estimated $9,520. We are removing community survey, we're removing draft plan, and we're moving the MDR plan admission, so we're down to $9,520.
Right. Take some majority vote, motion on the floor to table, all those in support of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion to table approved, five-two. Charlie, would you?
I'm not sure what my, my question is, I'm trying to answer something.
And without solid leadership, we're, it's, it's going to falter, I can tell you that.
Well, I think, I think what I heard.
Not as Charlie, but as.
We want real numbers. We want to know what it would cost, and, and so we're, we're, we need you to come back with a figure from Gosling. And if it's supposed to be 5,000 less than, or less than that, then we'll entertain it. Otherwise, we'll decide to do on a waiver of bid rules. Commissioner Kramer?
I'd just like to hear from Trudy and some other people and just get a little bit more background information and be, you know, feel like I have the whole situation under my belt, which I don't right now.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know this for certain, in the 2019, planning department was not part of the process for coming up with the current plan. We've just now gotten into where planning is, is our support staff. So I don't know who actually was involved with doing that at the time.
I, I have been, I have been informed that our, our rules of order say we are moving on. We have agreed to table it, so we need to move on. I would ask you, Charlie, to get with our administrator and she'll help you decide next step.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are now, thanks, Michelle. Michelle, thank you for keeping us on it. We are now down to.
Financial.
Are we through the agenda?
Yep.
We are now at the part in our agenda where we ask questions of Kathy. Any questions about finances or any review of finances?
We have finances, correct?
We have finances.
You got a new question?
And I suppose in her copy, I sent you emails that said, nothing exciting there, except we cleaned up 23-year plan to close 23 down. We might have a striver or two, but we're getting to the end.
I looked and I have no questions.
And thank you, Kathy, for answering my questions earlier.
Sure. Yeah, anytime you can even just text me and just say, hey, what about this, what about that? And you got your own questions.
And you sent us out late, late ones today.
Yes.
Sometimes you send out late, late, late ones.
I hope I never have to do that. Three, three late.
Okay, thank you. We are now at committee reports. Anybody have a committee report? Commissioner Ross?
Yes, I'd just like to report that this afternoon at 3:00 at the Monique Room and at the Leland Library, we had 30-plus people in the room to hear about the, the electric grid and how it works. Frank Sepker from Cherryland Electric did an amazing job of helping us understand how complex getting safe, reliable, consistent electrical, inexpensive it is. He answered literally probably 100 questions and did it well. And again, it was part of the Energy Task Force responsibility. I'm on the education and energy efficiency and it was our thing to do, and we're doing another one in March, another one in April, another one in May, and then another one in July, just educational opportunities for people to learn more about what energy looks like or could look like in Leland County. And I encourage you guys, I'll keep you posted for the next one.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, we were really happy to send Frank to that. That was a brain, brainchild of Tom Van Pelt's, and I thought it was a good one. Frank does a phenomenal job. Can't stump him.
Thank you. We now are at special reports. Any special reports by clerk or commissioners?
We had 103 voters so far.
And how did that feel? I mean, like, did that feel like what you expected or?
It's far more than what I expected. It's going very good. I can't think Saturday, Sunday, Monday. We're only on day four, we'll be done Sunday at 5:00, and so it's going smoothly and it's just people stopping in to vote.
I was your first customer this morning.
Were you?
Yeah.
Very good.
Can I ask how, why are people, did you get a sense of why they're using this?
No, we don't ask them. Some of them just wanted to try because they knew it was available. We had people even before we opened last week stopping by that were leaving town that didn't maybe want to do an absentee ballot. They wanted to just put their ballot through and some people also brought their absentee ballot here to, so they could put it through themselves. Maybe they couldn't go on Election Day and some just, I don't know why. So once we get done with this cycle, we'll do it again for August primary and then November.
And do you have a request for us about what to do at the end of this meeting to prepare for you for tomorrow?
Apparently the maintenance staff will be in, so they said they would take care of it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other special reports? Then we are at our second public comment. You have up to five minutes and you may talk to us about anything that you would like to. Yes, Keith? And then Renee.
Ashley, Leland Township. Interesting sitting in the audience and listening to this long debate on this grant application. And what I got from it, it was all said and done, the vote of four to three to save taxpayers a million dollars, three no votes, I think basically based on the word environmental justice and elective vehicles. The realities are, the police chief will be driving an electric police car in 25 years, whether he likes it or not. The manufacturers are not going to be producing combustion engines 25 years from now. That hurts my heart. I love a combustion engine, but fortunately I'm old enough, I'll never drive an electric car either, so it works out. The no-bid contract for Mr. Janik to find a new administrator, CFO, strikes me kind of odd, kind of bad, especially when the subsequent conversation was to have a bid contract for this park business that you're talking about. With 10 local firms that can do searches, I think it behooves you to find out just how much does a search cost? You know, for him to say $4,500, that's fine, that's his fee, but how much would it cost you to have a search? What would you get from 10 other companies? I'm sure each one of you went to them and said, we'd like you to, quote, finding a new CFO administrator. You'd have a page that says, we'll do this, you'll have a page that says, we'll do something else. From those pages, you can then pick what you think is the best approach. So I think it's a bad decision to, to do that without a bid between the ones that are available. The cash drawer, I think, remains open, leaving taxpayers dollars in this process. The decision 30 years ago by the previous board with no planning for this reorganization, my understanding, has cost in excess of $250,000, and I don't think those dollars have stopped rolling yet. And it sounds to me like you still don't really have a plan. Where does it end? When do the taxpayers get the satisfaction that we really know what we're going to do and how we're going to do it? To lose the administrator Allen, I think, is a loss to the county and it's an embarrassment. Previous financial officers, the loss of them is an embarrassment to the county. And a study that you paid a lot of money for to, what's wrong with in this building? It's going to be a challenge, I think, to find out how do you fix those things? And I don't know Mr. Janik at all. I've seen him here and I think he seems to have done a good job, particularly now with the situation within this building. I think it behooves you to go outside of anybody who has worked in this building, particularly at that level, and hire a search firm right fresh from the go and let them come in here and figure out what it is you're looking for and let them go about it. And break all the bonds with the past, because it seems like, you know, that's been done. Unfortunately, it's cost us a lot of money and it's cost you all, I know, a lot of grief. I just think you're going in the wrong direction, that there are financial people that are financial people, and I don't think myself that they have to be the administrator as well. And I think you're putting yourself up against a challenge in just the history that these jobs come and go. You'll not only be looking for this next administrator CFO, you'll be looking for the replacement for that person as well unless you have things under control in this building.
Thank you. Ms. Rader.
I would like to ask, um, Chad Janik. This morning, Patriots had a visit from a new person who would like to be a member of the Patriots. He was a federal agent with the DOJ. He was on his resume, he was reporting, so I guess he would have had some administrative experience, and he applied for the county administrator's job 2020. And his application was never, I guess, even looked at by Chad Janik. So he wanted to know why the record equal reported that there were no applicants that applied. So he had a DOJ guy that moved here and wants to be involved in our local government and he was overlooked, and that's very depressing. How many other applicants have not even been, you know, their applications have not even been looked at? I still have the guy's name. I don't know if he's understood, but with someone with that kind of experience, I think we really need to take a look at the whole process of Chad Janik. On another matter, the $72,000 for repairing a private road, that's very objectionable to me because I used to live on a private road and we had to do everything. All the neighbors had to come together and pay bids and do, you know, any kind of drainage that was on us. So why are we using taxpayer dollars to repair a private road? And that's all I'm going to say about that. Now I want to know about, I asked my commissioner, you say, Ash, your commissioner, I mean, we wait here four or five hours at, at any meeting to have our public comment so we can have our First Amendment rights, but we have to wait four to five hours. These people would like to be home eating dinner or something, but we can't do that because you're restricting our First Amendment rights, and that's problematic. What happened tonight with the Green Energy Task Force? I'm very disappointed with that situation because Mr. Commissioner Westall told us, the Patriots, that we could have two positions on that committee. You promised us two positions, did you not? When she, when Commissioner Lutner asked to be on the committee, she was able to get on there, but what we have here is a Green Energy Commission with only a few of, very select group of individuals yet to be heard. We in the Patriots don't get any say in that, and I object to that. You promised me, Chairman Westall, that we would be able to have two of our members on that. And if we had, we would be objecting to our constitutional sheriff and his concerns about security with this whole solar project. And lastly, I ask for my commissioner to let me know how much your bond deductibles are. Each one of you has a bond through the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. So if you are derelict in your duties or if you don't, if you do something that puts some of the savings in line perhaps, we have the ability, as we the people, to file a claim against your bond, okay? I asked Chad Janik years ago, how does this work? He doesn't know, he ignores me. I asked Deborah Allen about this and I actually sent her a letter in July. I've still not heard from her, okay? We're still concerned about the timestamp alterations of the green invoices, and I've asked the prosecutor's office to look into that as a criminal matter because we can't have our invoices being altered. There's no reason for an invoice to be altered when it comes in, it's a county 101. You put timestamp on it as the date it comes in, but that's not what's happening. We have whistleblowers coming.
Thank you, Ms. Rader. Any other public comment? Yes, Jim?
Kind of follow-up to last week. I just wonder what you guys thought, not to get any answers, but just wondering what you actually thought of that presentation. I wanted to over here and watch it over here for some of it. Wonder whether, what you thought about the professors, I have a dozen computer science professors that all were claiming the same, similar thing, the vulnerabilities, and what some of them have actually done with the software voting machines. It's not really just restricted to voting machines, you got to understand software, you go through the physical realm, through the digital realm. I brought that up at the beginning of that presentation too, because I believe, and I didn't dog it out and probably dig it out, but I think that's a prerequisite for a legal invalid election process, is maintaining a chain of custody. And you don't have that when it goes into the digital realm and it's scanned and it's being computated, computed, and it's going to be being decided by somebody who you don't know and you don't understand the language. That doesn't excuse you that you don't understand the language. Most of us don't. But when it goes into that realm, you lose any chain of custody. It's not physically there to trace, there's no transparency. That was a point I made at the very beginning. But getting back to the computer scientists that all had the same feeling about it, and the section, section, the second part of that, hopefully won't go my five minutes here, but the bureaucrats from multiple areas that were just swearing up and down that there was no internet connectivity. That was a common march tune from 2016 right on through to 2021. Even heard it here locally a lot. No internet connectivity. And then even the director of Cy, Cyber Infrastructure Security Administration, the former one, Chris Trebs, swore up and down until he had to walk it back when Ron Johnson of Wisconsin kept telling him, but we're updated during the election. How do we get this on ABC, NBC, CBS, whatever? How do they get the updates? Well, obviously, they have access to what's going on and the votes being tabulated. It doesn't take a rock, scientists understand that. But then going into the people that were actually elected, like you, the politicians, not pretty in that bracket, but you know, you're elected by the people, okay, who are swear that this was. Who are swear that this was done here in Georgia and this was done here and this was done. Shoot, you even have a former Secretary of State detailing what she heard from Silicon Valley about what they said they were going to do for the next election. This was in 2019. With the next election, what you could see is actually servers being stopped, the process being stopped, interference coming here and there. Amazing, huh? Nice crystal ball that she had because it kind of went exactly that way. Not to mention our Vice President, who literally had people come in to her hearing and went in front of her, hacked the machine, showed them how vulnerable that software is, and in front of that committee, hacked the machine. So the idea of it's not possible is blowing right out of the water. In fact, even the current cyber director said that. That's why we're elevated to a national cyber alert status now. People are running around like chicken with their heads up because they don't know. You can't protect this. How do you know it's protecting? Why did I show you that video at the beginning? Is because it's a reality. Okay? I'm not quite enough to understand it, and none of us here are. But I am, I think, intelligent enough to be able to see enough dots hitting the same area on up times to start filling in a picture of what's going on. It's just serious stuff. It puts you guys where you're at. Wouldn't you like to know whether it's legit or not, whether there's any fudge going on? If you believe me, let's move on to the next one. So we had the scientists, we had the professors. We had the ones saying there's no internet. Now we have a lot of politicians all saying they witnessed it. They're whistleblowers. That's not even including the top dogs, well, not top dogs, but CIA whistleblower, Naveed Juarez, I believe, who actually outlined in detail what they did. I don't want to go into detail about it. You all heard it that we're here. This guy's done it. But guess who wrote this up? Who set the wheels in motion? And it wasn't the first guy who wrote the first rigging program. It was Dennis Montgomery. His company, capitalism, he had a company that could do this stuff and we hired him as a government. We want the best stuff in the world, but where are we now? I'm going to end this real quick. I was born in, the Cold War was on. I live now to see the temp wars going.
Thank you.
Because now we're trying to outdo ourselves.
Thank you.
The computers. When that video told you that, don't I say, you want to get out of this?
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim.
Other public comments? Yes, Mr. Makowski.
First of all, I'd like to say that I agree with Mr. Asher's statement, mostly the one that we should have had a truly independent, honest-like search firm. We cannot release ourselves from the past and want to stay attached to it. We have had a hour and 20 minutes of gathering by insanity. That discussion about the energy should have been held in a special meeting, not at this meeting tonight. And also, we have sensed here there are a few people that came onto office that are on their own on a platform to eliminate public comment. And I'm just going to now apply the blame on it to some more. The tax situation on the energy thing, you're being told there's a tax credit that's nearby. Now, if a tax credit is given to the county, then I don't know where the tax money from the tax rate comes from. Obviously, it cannot come from one tax rate. We have three Michigan FBSD members. I'm sure they're so ambitious and relentless, they will accept what we hear and everything we're going to send them is going to be passed by them to be accepted. Because all they're doing is building up millions of dollars. And we got to ease and we're ecstatic about the fact that we don't waste the grant money for somebody else. We want to try and waste it. It's our best. Another, a recent meeting with Shelby Steele, his son, talked about, you can't find your innocence by hating others. So much of our politics and culture really come out of this struggle of innocence. Work is nothing more or less than this struggle for innocence, a way to be innocent and therefore to have power. This leads to dark things. Shelby Steele observed the left claims its politics have more innocence than yours. And on that basis, they seek power over others. Evil is everywhere, waiting around the corner. Advocating for itself has a moral convenience that will make you a better person. So, as our main event, 2021, we, some of us in public office, became a cheer here for evil to attack the court and pass this motion, which Mr. Asher talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bill?
One person, one ballot, one vote, one day. Bill, we should tell what time it is. The reason, that was in the Constitution, like, election day, when you have nine days of really voting, what's that do to the chain of custody? Poll books, they're tracking all that stuff, who voted, and they know who didn't vote. And they can make some people vote, maybe, the names anyway, especially with mail-in ballots. And we heard Jim just review the elections and the security breaches. And somebody brought up tonight that, ah, they've looked at all this and there's no real evidence of computer-generated fraud. Well, what he mentioned too, 2016 to 2020, over and over, Hillary Clinton, Kamala Harris, 20 others, this happened to be Democrats, were very concerned that. So would some of the people speaking here or anywhere, commissioners, explain to us what happened in the meantime? What changed? And I think we all know what changed, and maybe that's why you're applying. And Ty mentioned to me, and it is a late night for all of us, we're all paying our dues. But he mentioned, you're really paying your dues tonight? And I said, yeah. But it goes the other way too. The commissioners, you didn't get, you didn't take this job to make money, to get rich, right? You want to push forward your ideas. So maybe it's good that you pay some dues and allow the public to come and express their ideas. And it doesn't have to be just on this little agenda. Our time has been cut in half. I've cut, I started coming two years, this is the end of February, I started in March 2022, coming pretty much every meeting, speaking at every, I'd come for five minutes for like quite a while, I don't know, months, months. And just I'd listen through chat and then the rest of it, you know, everybody's busy. I'd leave. I didn't stay for the second comment. And then they said, no, no, we're going to lower it. So it's down to three minutes at the beginning. Three minutes? Okay, I did that. But then I stayed for the meeting. From then on, it's like, okay, I'm staying for the four minutes. Then in five minutes, I'll get eight minutes. I'm paying my dues. I'm willing to invest that much time because this is so important, the election integrity. And then, after that, three minutes, but oh, and what have we been talking about? The elections, the elections. Some people don't want to hear about the elections, but this isn't going away. It's like Farrell. We've got slave masters saying, now, because you've got us upset on this issue, you're not only going to make those blocks, but you're going to make them, you're going to have to get your own straw to make them. We're not going to serve the straw. They cut it down to three minutes agenda only. And now this last move, not only the executive meeting, but the regular meeting, the special meetings, the full committee meetings, no, 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 no. You got to speak on the agenda. Nothing else is important to us. Well, then you have to get on to the people's business because this is taking too much of your time? Well, the people's business, we're coming with the people's business. 21 counties, I looked at them, I don't have the in here, but 21 counties from Matsego going straight across the street to the bridge, there's 21 counties there. And five of them, now legal included, you got to speak on the agenda or you don't speak the first meeting. Over 75% of them say, no, let's allow free speech. Let them speak. We're in the minority there. And Chat talked about building trust, working together, and looking at all the info. Some of the commissioners said, I didn't get all the info. Well, and, you know, it's important to have all the info. I offered the, we had 30 DVDs, Let My People Go dot movie, and two of the commissioners didn't take them. Said, no, we're not going to look at that. That's not developing trust.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes. I suppose on the last one, I agree. Speaking of solar partnership, there's been a lot of discussion about the cost savings of the solar panels. And the million dollars is a wonderful figure to hear, a certain money that we need in this county to help with our tax base. But there have been several inaccuracies in the presentations that have been made. And I'm just wondering if there's any teeth behind this million dollar cost savings? It's very easy to say, we're going to save you a million dollars over the course of 20 years. But where's the proof? Where's the backup? Is there anything that's going to back that up contractually that ensures that we get that money? Because there's going to be a big outlay of money, it's going to cost money, the maintenance issues still, in my mind, haven't been fully resolved. That could, that could cost a lot of money to this county. So those things need to be considered. That's my point.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any commissioner comment?
Just wondering, we hear your concerns about the voting machines and the black boxes. My thought is, there's a lot of time and energy and effort being expended on this topic. Code is a language, and if you become proficient in code, you may be able to learn and understand a little bit more. I'm not claiming I do. I have a tech co-founder in my business that I work with. I do work with the tech community. There are ways that you guys could actually find out legitimate answers to these questions and they're tech-related. So I don't have an answer, but I would, I would start down that path and find cold, hard truth as opposed to just rhetoric, which I'm hearing a lot of rhetoric, a lot of talking, a lot of, you know, you have people that are saying things and I, and I understand that these are reputable people and you understand, and you, you trust their reputation. But code can be learned. And that I would like to see. Someone who's proficient in the language, speaks the language, and then that would be, that would be proof. And I think that maybe that's an avenue you should pursue because I would really like to see that.
I'm on a turn. They don't allow it to stay.
Please, sir. Please, please, sir. Any other commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Ward? Jim, Jim, please.
I just want to say about the solar panels tonight, when people found out that I was against the Veterans Memorial down there and I didn't want Chinese panels across from the people on that wall. A lot of people didn't understand why and some of them still don't, okay? And I can appreciate that, okay? But I'm real glad to see that, that they were moved away from there. I just wish that it wasn't pushed on us so much and so crowded that we could have made better decisions and made, made better friends, okay? I didn't want to upset anybody on this board. But things need to slow down and do it one step at a time. Tonight was kind of a cluster.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Ugar.
We had 34 letters of support for the solar grant application, which was very heartening. And I want to thank anyone who may be listening or anyone who sent a letter of support. We do have a lot of people who are encouraged by our continuing to step into the future. Again, this is an application. We had 60 days, they had 60 days to submit an application. We still can make small changes. The important thing is, if we had not submitted the application, opportunity absolutely gone. So I am glad that our county was willing to step out and create an opportunity to bring in a million dollars worth of infrastructure here that will pay $3,500 a month in energy costs. That's the estimate based on the energy that can be produced and energy costs, actual energy bills and costs that were generated for, in researching what needed to go into this application. So it's not a guess. I'd also like to make one more comment about our committees. I've only been a commissioner for three years, but I sat in the audience like you guys did for 10 years. And I came to meetings where commissioners were making committee appointments. I've never observed that we make political appointments. That's just not what we do and I'm proud of that. We put people on committees who are interested in those areas, who have expertise, if possible. We never ask people to vote a certain way. We ask them to use their judgment and we trust our citizens. But our committees are full of people who are interested in the goals of a committee and providing true worth and gifting us with their expertise. And I would sure hope that never changes.
Any other commissioner comments? I have, I have two. One, I want to respond to the, no commissioner here, nor the chair, nor the administrator can guarantee anybody any seats on a committee. The only guarantee we can make is you have the right to apply. And that's the commitment made. Second thing is, I understand the concern that Bill expressed about, about limiting the public comment. We did it because we also have a lot of work to do and will stay as late as necessary to listen to the public. But we got to have time to do our work too. Thank you. Motion is yours?
No.
We have, I've got to prove.
Oh, we do.
Well, I'd like to say that.
I thought that was out there just to wait for us.
Is it the late later or the late?
We just want to approve it all. Can you make a motion to approve?
Yes, well, yes, but I had a commissioner comment. I really wish that I could believe what I just heard, but I, I just cannot, because I've seen too much in the last year when it comes to appointments. So I would move to approve amendment number 24-002.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion approved.
I would move to approve claims and accounts, $556,994.78.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion approved, seven zero.
I've moved to approve post audit, $2,498,158.54.
Support.
All those in support, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved, seven zero.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.